Mayor staff is ready when you are.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. A special meeting of the Sacramento City Council, please be called the order with the clerk call the rule to establish a court.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Shanir.
Here.
Mayor Protem Geta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I'm here. Would Mayor Protem Geta consider leading us? I'm getting feedback there, I'm sorry. Consider leading us in land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance, please.
Okay. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of our Sacramento Indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu, the Valley and Plains Miwok, the Putwin-Wintun people, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the Native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for the Sacramento region Indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. And if folks could please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Geta. Members, let me make a couple of opening comments here about what brings us together on a Wednesday in this extraordinary session. Been reported, and all members know, but for members of the public, a group of citizens led by some business leaders in Sacramento have published an initiative, an initiative that is currently out for signatures in Sacramento. There has been a significant negotiation that has taken hold by city management with the initiative proponents to see if there might be an alternative that the city council could pass tonight that is before us here tonight. I want to take just a moment to talk about the process and briefly to talk about the substance. And ordinarily, I or any of us would talk about the substance throughout the deliberations and sort of announce where they stand at the end, but I feel compelled to do that earlier tonight because of the connection between the substance and the process. So bear with me for just a moment. It will not take long. On the substance of what is presented to us tonight, I am prepared to strongly support the compromise initiative. Why? Because even with its imperfections, I might write it differently. And in fact, I did write it differently when I forwarded my right to housing proposal in the fall. I strongly support this because it is consistent with my years of advocacy on the importance of the law. Namely, the initiative before us, the ordinance before us that would go to the ballot, would hold the city legally accountable, create thousands of additional beds, homes, shelters, and spaces. Currently, the city is not legally required to do so. And in my opinion, and I think the opinion of many of our constituents, results speak for themselves. Secondly, in most instances, and we'll draw this out tonight during the discussion, the city will not be able to move people out of encampments unless they offer a safe and dignified alternative. That's where I stand on the substance. On the process, I disagree strongly with the recommendation to vote tonight with 24 hours' notice to the public. With 24 hours' notice to the public, making this significant of a change in the charter is at least worth a week of deliberation and the ability for all members of the public, agree, disagree, whether they were part of this, not part of this, doesn't matter what side. They may think this doesn't go far enough, others think this goes too far. They have the right to input, and they will barely be provided it. But we are over a barrel here, because we'll hear from the initiative proponent in a few minutes, and we'll ask him a question about the process, especially given what I have just stated about my views on the substance of what has been negotiated here, my very positive comments. But I also want to hear from you, members of the city council, on how you feel about process. They're telling us, you know, clearly that if we don't vote on this tonight, they're going to go through and file this initiative that's out on the streets that we all agree could have severe financial repercussions for our city. That's the context where we find ourselves. And I just think it's important to set the stage. I believe that this compromise is imperfect, but right. I don't like the process. And depending on sort of a straw poll of my colleagues as we converse about all of this tonight, we'll see whether or not we actually go forward with a vote tonight, or we do in fact wait till next Tuesday and I suppose take our chances. I just wanted to put that before all of you. Now, the way this is going to work is the city manager and the initiative proponent, Daniel Conway, are going to present. They're going to present about what led to this compromise that is before us this afternoon. I think I'm going to want to, that important, want to take a round of hearing from the council on the process questions certainly, and any questions you have on substance. And of course, we will hear from the public, and then depending upon the will of the council, we will take action or not. All right, so I'm going to now turn it over to city manager Chan and Mr. Conway to tell us about the product that is in front of us.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you framing the item here tonight. You know, I first want to thank the mayor and council for indulging staff with the special meeting. And I think you hit on all the points I was going to cover, but we'll have more on that later from the proponent. As you're aware, staff's been working closely with the proponents of Temporary Shelter Enforcement Act of 22, 2022, since the initiative was first introduced in February of this year. At the time, staff reviewed the language contained in the initiative and the framework, had significant concerns about the potential impacts to our city, both from an implementation feasibility and a financial viability perspective. Staff immediately engaged with the proponents to begin discussions on how to improve the measure such that we collectively could be more successful in providing much-needed resources to our unhoused community while simultaneously providing relief to our businesses and residents. Following those lengthy conversations and negotiations with the proponents, I'm pleased to share that we've successfully, as the mayor pointed out, negotiated an alternative ordinance that addresses many of the concerns staff had, and strongly recommend that you approve the ordinance before you and direct the city clerk to return to the council on April 19th with the administrative items necessary to submit the ordinance to the voters during the November 8th general election. Further, should the council approve this item tonight, the proponents are prepared to suspend signature gathering efforts and withdraw their initiative from the general election in November. As the mayor indicated, I'm going to turn it over to the proponents, Daniel Conway, and he's going to make a few remarks. But following Daniel, I will have Matt Ruiac, the Assistant City Attorney, walk us through what the harrison between the initiative that's circulating and the proposed ordinance here before you tonight. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Daniel Conway.
Howard, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I just want to begin by apologizing for any background noise on my end. I'm actively staffing my kids at swim lessons, so I tried to find a quiet corner, but I might have failed there. But I want to do take a few minutes to talk to you about this proposal and why we're here this evening. First of all, I want to thank you all, because I've known many of you for a decade, and I've had a chance to work with you. And when we filed this proposal in early February, I think I talked to all of you within about 72 hours and heard your input, heard your concerns about the potential fiscal and operational impacts to the city. And hearing that feedback and hearing from Howard and others, we took that to heart and we listened. And I think as the mayor alluded to in his comments this morning about imitation being the highest form of flattery, you know, we recognize that this city has been at work for years on this topic. And in many respects, our proposal reflects that work. But I think what you're going to see for the first time now is something that is binding on the city and that is going to provide both shelter at scale and capacity, as well as the encampment reduction efforts that our community so badly wants to see. And so for us, we're very pleased with the proposal that we filed in February. We've been collecting signatures for about five weeks now, and we already have more than half the signatures that we need, because voters are ready for this. Voters want to support this kind of approach. But that being said, we heard you, Mr. Mayor, we heard you, council members, we heard you, Mr. Chan, we heard you, Madam City Attorney, about the variety of concerns that you had, and we got to work and we made it happen. And you know, I'm someone, as many of you know, you know, I'm a former city employee, I've worked with many of you there. I know that things like this don't happen easily, right? The kind of effort that went into this by all of you. And your staff, by Howard, Susana. And so that's the sense of urgency. You know, the sense of urgency is that this is something, this crisis requires urgency, and you all moved with the sense of urgency that this needs. And so for us, we're ready to take action tonight. You know, our coalition had a press conference earlier today at Golden One where we expressed how excited we were for tonight's vote and how much we appreciate you all moving quickly to make it happen. And so I'm happy to take questions, but I think at the end of the day, like I said, this is a proposal that's going to let the voters of Sacramento help shape the future of this issue. It's going to double our shelter capacity by next summer, and it's going to give us a systematic, holistic, and humane approach to addressing encampments that I think we all want to see. So I look forward to working with you, but from our perspective as a coalition, there's nothing material that's going to change from now between next Tuesday. And so to the extent that there's a conversation about wanting to delay a vote, I, from our perspective, there's no reason to delay. Like, we want to get to work. We want to start this campaign. We want the people of Sacramento as bought in, as excited about this effort as you all are, as we all are. So from my perspective, I'm happy to take questions. Again, I appreciate you, Mayor, your colleagues on the council, city manager Chan, Susana, all of you. But we're ready to move forward and we're ready to make this the next phase for Sacramento. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yep.
Before we go on, I think the clerk has a minor amendment to read into the record. Mindy?
Yes, thank you, Howard. This is Mindy Capi, City Clerk. And I do have an edit to read into the record. On page four of the proposed ordinance, staff is recommending adding subsection one under 12.100.020A, which reads, "Of the required emergency shelter spaces, as circumstances allow, the city manager shall endeavor to identify and authorize emergency shelter spaces throughout the city to avoid over-concentration."
Thank you, Mindy.
Thank you.
Howard?
Yeah.
Thank you. I will turn it over to Matt Ruiac.
Thank you.
Members, this is Matt Ruiac, Assistant City Attorney. And as Howard indicated, we have two things that you have before you tonight in your packet, right? We have the circulating initiative as drafted by the proponents, and then you have a proposed alternative ordinance that was drafted by your city attorney's office in conjunction with the city manager and in deep conversation with the proponents of the initiative. And to give an overview, how those negotiations resulted in changes from the initiative to the alternative proposal before you, supervising Deputy City Attorney Steve Itagaki prepared a very concise and insightful comparison chart between the initiative measure and the city proposal. And I hope that's on your screen before you now. And really, there's some significant changes as well as some parallelisms, where we just tracked what the proponents were trying to do, because we're trying to achieve the objective set forth by the proponents, and we all want to get to the same place eventually. So at the top, you'll see, under the initiative, the initiative proposes that the city is mandated to provide a maximum emergency shelter space number equal to 75% of the last pit count, the point in time count that happens on a biennial. Alternatively, the city proposal says the maximum amount will be 60% of the total city and county unsheltered homeless as estimated by the pit in 2022, or the most recent pit, whichever is less. Because as you can tell, this ordinance will potentially go on for a couple of years, or several years, until we reach, achieve the objectives. And so there may be future pit counts, and this accounts for that. When will we have, when will the city be obligated to identify and authorize these emergency spaces? The initiative says, within 60 days, get to that full 100% of the maximum, i.e. get to the 75% of the pit count. On the other hand, the alternative that is before you says, within 90 days, identify and authorize 20% of the maximum. Then, after that 90-day period expires, if in any month after that, there's a utilization of those identified and authorized emergency shelter spaces, that is over 60%. So in other words, if over 60% of the spaces are being occupied, then the city manager shall go to the next tranche and identify and authorize another 20% within 30 days. So it's kind of a rolling, it's a rolling assessment of the utilization of the emergency spaces and ensuring that additional spaces get added as needed, but on the other hand, not overbuilding if the shelter spaces are not being adequately used. What is the impact on the city budget? As the mayor alluded to during his remarks, the initiative measure really places kind of an unknown and unlimited exposure on the city because of the high 75% requirement, the timeline in which to do it, and the obligations and liabilities placed upon the city manager. On the other hand, we have in the alternative proposal, as you'll see, it's identified as chap, I'm sorry, section 12.100.020, in the proposed alternative ordinance, mechanism works like this, right? So first, let's see if the city can achieve its funding by tapping into external resources, county, state, federal government. First, take money from there. Then, annually thereafter, allocate up to what's identified in the city's budget as 50% of unobligated general fund year-end resource, but not to exceed $5 million. So in order to fund the obligations, commitments, and liabilities under this ordinance, after we tap into as much external resources as we have, the city shall allocate amounts sufficient to achieve objectives that it can, but to a limit of $5 million. Now, I will say, having said that, that's the obligation. Nothing would prohibit the city from allocating more if it's so. Next, just like, just like the initiative measure, the city's measure says, city manager, you should be collecting data on a regular daily basis, collecting data, understanding who's out there, and how often, and how much the emergency shelter spaces are being utilized, and report that to the city council every 30 days. In addition, there's an obligation in there, or just like both measures provide, that after 12 months from the effective date of the measure, significant progress needs to be made, and the city back to the city council. Now, how do we achieve this? How do we make sure that folks are getting the services and getting access to the emergency shelter spaces identified and authorized? Well, the initiative measure mandates that the city manager or his staff and/or contractors, obviously, every working day to go out and conduct outreach to those persons unlawfully camping. The city's alternative ordinance is a little more flexible. It says to do that in the same manner, but at least five days per week. Now, this doesn't need to be Monday to Friday, but at least five days a week. The city manager shall designate parts of the city where he goes up and does outreach to persons off and encamping. Try to get them into contact with county mental health services, and try to get them to take advantage of available emergency shelter spaces. The alternative ordinance for you tonight tracks the unlawful camping enforcement provisions of the measure, which says that the unlawful camping portions of the city code shall not be enforced until the numbers I described above are achieved. That is the minimum requirement of the identified and authorized emergency shelter spaces have been identified and authorized. And in fact, when we go out and contact a person unlawfully camping, at that time, there is an emergency shelter available. The city offers that person a space, and the person refuses that space, I'm sorry, refuses the offer and refuses. All those conditions must be met for the unlawful camping. What about unlawful encampments? And what's the difference between camping and encampments? Both of the measures define encampments in the same way, and encampment is defined in both proposed ordinances as four or more unrelated persons living together, camping together, or within 50 feet of each other without permitted water, electricity, and bathroom facilities. Both measures allow the city to force against encampment. It makes it illegal to either camp in encampment or accumulate hazardous waste and debris in Finally, one of the main provisions of the initiative measure is putting an obligation on the city to take care of its property to the same standards that it requires other people to take care of their property. And the initiative, the small nuance here is, in the initiative measure, it provides that 180 days after the effective date of this measure, any resident harmed by any nuisance on public property can commence nuisance abatement procedure in the city. And the city has a certain amount of time to abate that alleged nuisance. If it's not abated, there is an automatic appeal to a hearing examiner. On the other hand, on the alternative ordinance that's before you, same timeframe, 180 days after the effective date, a resident harmed by unlawful camping or unlawful storage of property, not just any nuisance, but those two things, which is the focus of what this measure's all about, right? Unlawful camping. The city can do, I'm sorry, a resident can do the same thing. Issue this city a notice and demand to abate. In this case, if the city fails to abate or disputes the abate, the abatement demand, then the resident can choose to appeal that to a hearing examiner. In both cases, the resident, if successful and getting a hearing examiner to order the city to abate a nuisance on its property, the resident would be able to recover costs and several attorney's fees added in our proposed alternative ordinance of reasonable attorney's fees. So that's the basic difference between the two. They're ultimately serving to achieve the same objective, but with slightly nuanced restrictions and descriptions on about how that will get done. So with that, Howard, I will turn it back.
I think that concludes staff comments. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. All right. Well, I think, again, what I'd like to do is give council members the opportunity to ask questions, and we'll turn it over to the public for testimony, then come back to the council for deliberations. I want to begin with Council Member Jeff Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think that the public is probably not fully cognizant of all of the efforts that we have made to move forward with homeless services and to deal with the homeless crisis in our city. Our efforts have been substantial, have been formidable. We have achieved a lot of successes. We housed at least a couple thousand people in my tenure as council. That is no easy task. But yet, the problem remains on our streets. First, Mayor, I'd like to thank you, because when I look at this particular initiative as proposed by Daniel Conway and others, and I look at the compromise that was reached by staff and the city manager, it's clear to me that some of the foundational ideas in this actually came from you. The idea of holding the city accountable, the idea of compelling the homeless to accept shelter was something that you have mentioned in the past. And I feel that a lot of the tenants of this measure proposed to us today for potential placing on the ballot actually came from your idea. So I thank you for that. Also, to Dan Conway, I, you know, I believe that you acknowledged the public angst about what was perceived as our city lethargy, our inability to move things forward quick enough, lack of enforcement, issues on the street, things that I've talked about at council in the past. You, Dan, recognized that and made a very earnest attempt to bring forward a ballot initiative that would help not only the homeless, but help the housed to understand that they have a voice in this matter, and that the city can be compelled into action. But when I looked at the original initiative, it was very clear to me, it could cause great harm to the city financially, but more than that, and this is a really key point, it was infeasible to enact. There wasn't enough space in the city, there wasn't enough dollars in the bank, and more importantly, there wasn't, there's not enough staff in this region to staff the number of shelter beds that was contained in the original initiative. And now, I have to thank our staff, our city attorney's staff, our city manager and his staff for recognizing the flaws in the measure and engaging the business community and others to come up with a reasonable alternative, which I believe they have done. I am absolutely in favor of placing this on the ballot and feel strongly and hope strongly that the council colleagues will acknowledge that. As far as the data piece, I want to point out that this council, and very soon, the county supervisors, will be hopefully passing, we have passed, and the county hopefully will pass, coordinated access and HMIS. We have funded it. Without that in place, we couldn't comply with this data piece. In fact, without those foundational ideas in place, our whole approach to homelessness has been pretty much dysfunctional. We need that data. And so the fact that that's recognized in this ballot initiative is very important, very important aspect of what we're looking at here. You know, we've got pieces in place to do a Haven for Hope-type model. We hear that all the time. You got to do Haven for Hope, you got to do Haven for Hope. Well, that's where coordinated access and HMIS came from, and we have already enacted the most important piece of Haven for Hope. We've got the 100 acres. We have been putting the pieces in place to do a very energetic response to homelessness, and we're moving forward quickly with that. You know, I have always wanted to do a balanced approach of services and enforcement to protect all the people, the unhoused and the housed. And I think that this initiative will help us get there, and much more quickly than we have been doing thus far. I think that you all know, and we have acknowledged at council many times, that without a collaboration with the county, working hand in glove for them to provide behavioral health services, that we will not get to the finish line in dealing with homelessness. This ballot initiative moves us, I think, into a place where we can really cement that relationship with the county and get them to do their piece, which is providing behavioral health services. relationship with the county and get them to do their piece, which is providing behavioral health services. If we have space, if we have shelter beds, that's a good thing. We can clean up our streets, but none of it will work without very advanced behavioral health services. Now, we all know that the county gets HUDM HSA money. They have the ability to work with us in a collaborative approach, and I know that our city manager has worked with the county exec on numerous issues, try to build that relationship. I'll end here in saying this, that this is an excellent compromise. This is something that we, it will be a stretch to afford it, it will be difficult to stand it up, but this gives us a strong fighting chance to make a very significant dent in our homeless population, to meet people with the services that they need. You know, we we still have to focus, of course, on the housing piece, but this is a very important first step, and I see it as another piece falling into place. And this might not be the time, Mayor, but I certainly would like to move the staff recommendation.
Well, that's fine, put a motion on the table at any. That is moved. Let's turn it over to Councilmember Valenzuela, then Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilmember Vang and I are going to do this a little bit together because and we were in each other's brown act bubbles and have some points to raise. I do just want to say, though, to your starting point, getting this language on Monday after what happened on Sunday with the horrific shooting and then trying to vote on this today is really not appropriate. I I do not feel prepared. I have not been able to consult my community because right now my community is trying to to heal and figure out how to support the victims' families. And so I do hope that we won't take this up today and that we will give ourselves the time and space to do this thoughtfully and with the community's full engagement. But I will say also, though, to the larger point here, that I know some of us just have fundamental disagreements on the structure and rationale of of what's happening here because on a larger policy front, you know, we're operating under the assumption that folks are service resistant and that the city is allowing camps. It actually says that in the intent of this measure, which is simply not true. And we're also doing this before we even get the numbers. Now, so we actually don't even know the scale of of what we're committing to here. However, you know, being pragmatic and recognizing that, you know, we might be the minority voice on this issue, we do have three key amendments that we want to put on the table here tonight with the goal of really ensuring that whatever comes out today is implementable and realistic and doesn't do further harm, both to the people experiencing homelessness, but also to the house community and businesses that are really looking to us to provide them a real path forward out of this crisis and something that will provide real relief at a timeline and a time and date that they they can count on, which is really where, as we discussed earlier, this impetus came from. So I'll pass it over to Maya to start off, and we'll take just a few minutes here, Mayor, to to share some of our thoughts and ideas about this language presented.
That's fine, of course.
So, Mike, go ahead.
So much, Councilwoman Valenzuela. You know, I I echo the mayor's sentiment. I do want to share that, you know, with less than 24 hours of sharing this proposal, I spent last night after council and today reviewing the language. And I also want to acknowledge that I understand our collective sense of urgency as a community, both from the proponents and also our unhoused advocates, to really address what's happening on our streets and to meet the needs of our unhoused neighbors. But for me, it's so important that we move forward with intentionality in a way that doesn't result in unintended consequences for our most vulnerable communities for years to come, because this is something that is that is going to lay the foundation, that's going to change our charter, and we have to make sure we do our due diligence. As council members, we also have a responsibility to ensure that we're a good steward of community engagement and allowing community to fully participate in this process. And having a proposal presented less than 24 hours does add to the broken trust that has been in our communities and my communities for decades. But I understand we're here now with a an alternative proposal for an initiative. It's either this or the original one that the proponents proposed in February. And I know that this council will have to vote on this alternative measure because we know that the formal one would absolutely bankrupt our city to provide critical services that the city is responsible for. So before we vote on this item, again, it's really important for me to ensure that we're not creating more harm. I do look forward to sharing our amendments and deliberation. Are we doing this right after public comments or are we presenting this now?
You're welcome to present this now. I I'm doing this a little bit differently tonight. I think this is important for the council to be able to air what they want or ask their questions now, then go to public comment and then come back.
Thank you, Mayor. So there are three areas of concern, and I actually think Councilmember Valenzuela and I have reasonable amendments that I would say our colleagues may agree with, most likely will agree with us. And the three areas of concern, one is over concentration of the shelter, two is the enforcement option, which we still have on the table, and three, ensuring the feasibility, which Councilmember Harris spoke to about ensuring that the county is involved in this process. So the first piece is about over concentration of shelters. I, that is, this, the over concentration of shelter is probably one of our biggest concern, and it's one of my biggest concern as someone who represents a community that is often left behind. As it stands, the lack of language on required shelter in each district and the current buffer zone will lead to over concentration in specific districts and low-income neighborhoods. And specifically, I like to call out three districts that I know, based on this initiative, where heavily the the shelters, the emergency shelter will be in. It will be in North Sacramento and Shawna Lowly's district, District Two, Councilmember Gara's district in District Six, and in my district, District Eight. I would like this this opportunity for Councilwoman Valenzuela to share a map that the city presented to us when we when we began brainstorming around the comprehensive siting plan. And I'd like for Councilmember Valenzuela to talk a little bit about the the buffer zones and its implication on this initiative and on on our city citywide.
Thank you. And I think you'll remember this map when we consider the temporary emergency shelter ordinance last January in 2021. The staff was mapping at that time a 500 or 300-foot buffer zone. And this was a little different because it didn't include residential zones. But I just, we we pointed this map to just show you how little space there is that even fits within a 300 or or 500-foot buffer zone. This is not a lot of space. And as Councilmember Vang said, it is mostly captured in North and South Sacramento and really lends to reinforcing what were very racist land use practices and zoning practices by over concentrating these in redlined communities and communities that have historically borne the brunt of of the things that we didn't necessarily want in other parts of. So I will switch over now to our language, Maya, if you want to talk through the first proposal.
Thanks. So just for this in particular, I think it's really going to be important to ensure that we require shelter spaces equally distributed throughout the city and each district as it stands. I do want to acknowledge our city manager, Howard, and the proponents. I do appreciate the additional amendment that was read into the record to begin to address the over concentration. But even with that as it stands, the language is not strong enough to protect our most vulnerable communities. And for me, it's incredibly important that we have stronger language and safeguards to protect our most vulnerable neighborhoods. Or what will happen is that we will have redline in terms of homelessness homelessness and poverty in our city. So I'd like to propose an amendment to the language to protect our communities in this initiative with just two minor, two minor edits to the amendment that was read into the record. I like to replace citywide to each council district, mainly because future city managers and council may consider that we're doing the citywide even if shelters are only in North and South Sacramento. And I believe that every district needs to step up to the plate in terms of this initiative and would like to remove the citywide to each council district. Secondly, I like to also cross out the words as circumstance allows that was read into the record. As if this, this, the three words, as circumstance allowed, I believe it gives the city an out in terms of implementing this in every district. So my minor changes to the amendment that was read into the record reads as is, of the required emergency shelter spaces, the city manager shall proportionally identify and authorize emergency shelter spaces in each council district to avoid over concentration. Period. That would be my recommendation, taking out the citywide to ensure that each council district and adding shall proportionally identify. Those are the two edits I like to make to that amendment. And with that, I'll hand it over to Councilwoman Valenzuela.
Thank you. And the second part of this first amendment is addressing the buffer zones that are currently in the ordinance. The map I showed you was of 500 feet. So with 1,000 feet, you would kick out a lot of those properties that are there. We really want to make this implemented. I think we need to reduce the amount of buffer space to be 300 feet, which is also something that our staff has mapped for us and creates a lot more options in every council district so that we can each carry the load here equally and really not reinforce, once again, those historically negative practices. The second bucket of amendments that we want to propose, I'll keep my screen share up so I can scroll down here in a minute, is really around the enforcement. So as it stands, unhoused individuals will only be offered one option, an emergency space, or be removed when it comes to enforcement. And so what I'd like to propose is really a more tiered approach to really ensure that shelter options meet the needs of unhoused individuals, but also give the city options when there is an urgent situation that might require us to move faster without proposing multiple options. We really want to emphasize this point because not everybody is going to fit every solution. I think about the women that I've talked to who have been sexually assaulted, and I think about what if we offered them a congregate shelter space that is multi-gender? That would not work for them. What if we offered them a congregate space in general and they were not comfortable with that? This is why we have specific women and children's providers in our system so that they can meet those unique needs. And as this ordinance is written, that woman might not have a choice. And that's not okay unless there's a really urgent circumstance that are. I also think of veterans. My dad was a veteran. He worked with vets with post-traumatic stress disorder. He had post-traumatic stress disorder. If you had told him to get into a roommate situation or a congregate situation overnight, that would not have worked for him. He would have needed to be in a room by himself. He would have needed potentially to stay outside in a tent. That's what would meet a need of them. And so what we want to do is respect the fact that not everybody can make every option work for them. So this is what we are proposing. We are proposing language that gives the city manager two options. One option is that if there is an urgent or imminent threat to public safety, this includes for folks in the camp. I'm thinking recently, when we worked with Caltrans to secure the area on 30th and D, we were able to offer all of those people Miller Park, and that was it, unfortunately, both because we didn't have another option, but because the fence had been broken through, folks were able to get onto the freeway and Caltrans and we worked together to say that's an urgent issue. We have to secure this fencing now. We're really sorry, we can only offer you Miller Park, but you've got to go so that we can secure, so you don't end up on the freeway inadvertently in the middle of the and get injured. But if there isn't an imminent issue, we believe that you should offer at least three options. And the reason we say three, and what you notice here is we're saying three different options, is that congregate shelter, a roommate or group home situation, a solo room, or outside camping or parking in a safe area are distinct options that could meet distinct needs based on the situation. And so if this isn't an urgent issue, we want to make sure we can offer the people a real option that might work for them because not one option is going to work for any two people the same way. So at minimum, we would like to say, and this is the language I will read for folks who aren't seeing the screen, maybe on the phone, is that the city manager has offered the individual appropriate emergency shelter spaces in accordance to the following criteria. If the city manager has determined that there is an urgent or imminent threat to public safety, at least one space shall be offered to the individual. If the city manager has determined that there is not an urgent or imminent threat to public safety, at least three spaces shall be offered to the individual. These spaces shall be different in nature, parentheses, congregate shelter, roommate or group home situation, individual living quarters, or outdoor safe camping or parking location to meet the range of unique needs among the unhoused population. And with that, for the third bucket, I will pass it back to Councilmember Vang.
Councilwoman Valenzuela, I do want to know in terms of this second amendment, is that the enforcement, to my colleagues, the enforcement is still on the table, right? Councilwoman Valenzuela and I debated that with each other, and we are not removing that. And so I want to share that with my colleague. It's really about making sure that we provide an array of options to folks that we will be asking, offering shelter spaces. I think it's really important to make sure that we note that to our colleagues. And so the last item that I want to share, which I think many of you share similar concerns as I've heard in our own one-on-one conversations throughout my year on council and what we've heard from the public, as I mentioned before, and what I've heard from my colleague is that we need the county involved in this process. We are and should continue to do everything we can as a city to address this crisis. It is a moral imperative, and that's the reason why the city has stepped up. However, as you heard from Councilmember Harris, we cannot do this alone, not only because even with the reduced buffer zone that we proposed, we still do not have enough space to accommodate the level of need even at 60%, but also because we do not offer as a city the mental health, the behavioral health, and the drug addiction services that folks need urgently. And so as Councilmember Harris mentioned, it is unrealistic for us to to tell the community that this initiative will solve anything without true county partnership. And so one solution that I believe that we need to add, this is the third amendment to this initiative, and the last one is that I believe we should condition our implementation of this measure on the county adopting a similar measure that commits them to either funding or providing the mental health and drug addiction and additional spaces needed to address the need. We can still pass this initiative, we can still put it on the ballot, but it only triggers if the county adopts a similar measure. And the reason why this is important, because we heard from proponents and even county supervisors that they are committed. And if they are committed, all of us should be working together collectively as a region to make sure that the county pass a ballot initiative measure so that this measure can be triggered, so that we can implement as a region to really address the need of our unhoused neighbors. And with that, I will hand it over to Councilwoman Valenzuela to share this last piece of language.
Thank you, Councilmember Vang. So currently, Sacramento Steps Forward is in the process of a gaps analysis. And what that gaps analysis is going to do, similar again to what Councilmember Harris is talking about, is look at the system and identify where are the parts in the system where it is broken? How many mental health beds do we need? How many drug treatment beds do we need? How many just senior beds do we need? Affordable housing? And really give us a more holistic picture of what we're talking about here in terms of what our county is going to need to move forward. So our language that we are presenting here today is super important because, as you all know, we don't do drug and mental health services. And as we all know, that isn't a important component. It's not the only component, but if we don't have those services, and more importantly, if we don't have the land. Because a lot of the ideas that my constituents and me, and I'm sure you get them as well, they say, what about this part of land? What about that part of land? Well, those are all in the county. They're not in the city. And so we're going to need their partnership, not just for the services and the funding, but also for the space. Because again, as you saw on that map, we do not have the space to address the level of need. It's tempting to say we're going to put 10,000 people on one lot in South Sacramento, but that is not realistic, that is not best practice. And yes, a campus model can definitely work, but it's going to need to be bigger than what we can manage here in the city of Sacramento. So our language is as follows. We add this to the end under the section four for the effective date. This act will be effective when the county of Sacramento, either by ordinance or by voter initiative, commits funding to address the deficit of services identified by Sacramento Steps Forward in their 2022 gaps analysis. These services shall include, but not be limited to, residential and outpatient mental health services and substance abuse programming, emergency shelter beds, affordable housing, and permanent supportive housing. This is what a comprehensive approach looks like. This is something that we would be comfortable committing to. And as we said at the beginning, this is not something that we're super thrilled by. I think we're operating at a deficit mentality that the folks on the street need to be forced to get help that they need when our experience has not been that. It's been that we have not been meeting the need with the services available. But given that, again, we recognize pragmatically, we are not the majority on this council with this opinion. We are trying to present some pragmatic options that make us feel comfortable enough to put this forward to voters for approval. And thank you for the time in letting us share this amendment language with you all tonight and happy to send this to the clerk or whoever else might need.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Val.
Mayor, with that, I'd like to make a a counter motion. I don't know. Okay.
Okay, no, go go ahead. Well.
I'd like to make a counter motion with.
Well, can you can you hold off? Can you hold off just for a moment? Because I I think, trust me here in terms of the process, your motion will be proper at any time, but if just a moment, because I think since this is a complicated situation, council does have the ability to put forward its own initiative regardless of what the initiative. Then you'll have competing initiatives. But if we want the initiative that is unsustainable financially for the city to go away, what Mr. Conway, who, who has the the city's best interests at heart here, has to agree to withdraw his initiative. And so there are several combinations and options here. And I think it is it is appropriate that we ask Mr. Conway to comment on whether or not there is, whether one, he agrees, but if he doesn't agree, whether or not he believes a. but if he doesn't agree, whether or not he believes a germ of a good idea or several good ideas here. Because, and then you get back to the process, because if we had an additional week, right? Some of these ideas could be potentially negotiated. But you got the gun to our head, Mr. Conway. We do have some choices, which is we put on an alternative in any way we want, but much better to work together if we can. I know you've worked with the city manager on this, and many members of my council are now getting to weigh in for the very first time. And I'd like to hear your views of the three specific ideas, maybe language less important than the concepts and the ideas themselves.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I guess first of all, I just want to say I don't want to characterize anything that we're doing as having anything to do with using weapons or violence or putting anything to anyone's head. I just think that's not an appropriate characterization ever, but particularly given recent events. You know, beyond that, I mean, to your point, Mr. Mayor, I guess we've heard from two council members, but I guess before I start to respond to any of the feedback, would it be worth letting your other colleagues weigh in just so that I can weigh in comprehensively to the feedback from the council?
I don't have anybody else up except for Councilmember Harris.
Well, if I could assert, Mayor, just because this is the first time that, I mean, we saw this two days ago. As you can imagine, we were quite busy for these last couple of days. We didn't get a chance to even put this together until this afternoon. So Daniel, if it's okay with you, it actually... On to these three amendments, if you're open to that.
Yeah, I think that's fine. It's...
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm, so I have the challenge of having just heard all of this for the first time myself, right? And I would say, you know, to you, Councilmember Valenzuela, and to you, Councilmember Vang, you know, again, I know you both. We, the three of us, got together in mid-February shortly after we filed this. And I said, "Please, we want to work with you. It's an open door." I know that any number of members of our coalition have put in calls to you and your colleagues over these last few days so that we could engage you and we could get your feedback.
I'm sorry, Daniel, I have to interrupt. We did not see this language until Monday. And it is not appropriate for you to assume that we saw anything different. So please just answer the question.
Madam Councilmember, first of all, you asked me a question. Second of all, I'm just a private citizen. I'm a father of four. I'm here because I was asked to be, and I'm not your city manager. So I have no control over when you get briefed and what information you get. I'm a former city staffer, so I understand how information flows in the city, but I have no control over what you knew and when you knew it. So I just want to clarify that for the record. I think in terms of... Go ahead, Mr.... No, go ahead, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
No, let me ask you this, because I think fair on all sides in the sense that you are hearing these suggested changes, which on their face, reasonable. I mean, we all agree, for example, that the county needs to be a full partner. Councilmember Vang has raised a reasonable question about the distribution of shelter. And frankly, what I'm worried about is that the very good intent that I'm ready to support of what you've done will be disrupted because if the buffer zone is too large, then there's not going to be enough space in the city to be able to accommodate the shelter. And so I guess the question is, if you have, I'll just be blunt here. If you have my commitment, and after all, you and I go back a long way here in terms of, let's just say, sharing ideas. Have my commitment that I am going to support this and that an additional week would give the public more opportunity to weigh in, including the consideration of some of these, again, reasonable concepts. Why wouldn't you agree to... In other words, what is it about tonight? You don't, you may not trust me that I'm going to try to undermine you. I'm assuring you here in the public that I would support this as is tonight. I'm ready to do that tonight despite its imperfection. But why is it that having a respectful public process and giving a week for some ideas like these to at least be... By you, by the way, because you still have a decision to make about whether or not you go forward with your initiative. Why isn't that the right thing to do? I don't understand it. I mean, you're saying, "Well, there's a sense of urgency." Please, you're a private citizen. We're living this every single day. You don't think there's a sense of urgency here? You don't think there's a sense of urgency around why we've brought $200 million to the table and created 1,100 shelter beds and are getting that you-know-what beat out of us every single week around this issue? Of course, there's urgency. We share that with you. And by the way, I think you've done a noble thing here, as difficult as it's been because you've forced a question. So I'm not trying to attack you. I'm just saying, you have my commitment, I'm going to support this. Why not take the week and consider the buffer zone, which nobody else has vetted? And we want to be able to build the shelters, the county connection? Consider it. You can say no in a week too, by the way, and I'm committing to you. I'm going to, I'm going to vote for the initiative because I think this moves overall the right direction. But why not?
I'm sorry, so what was the question?
Why not, why not, why not agree to have us vote on this a week from now? So that you can consider these suggestions? And you have my commitment, I will vote for this, whether or without the amendments. I'm just telling you, not playing a game here. I support, I would support the concept of these amendments. Why not give it a, why not give it another week? Understand.
Do you want to let Vice Mayor Ashby or Councilmember Harris weigh in before I respond?
No, I'm asking you. I'm asking you, sir.
Yeah, I guess what I would want to understand, and I appreciate your commitment to bring it back Tuesday and to support it both tonight and to support it tomorrow night. I guess my question is, what is going to happen over the next five days that's going to change the outcome of what's being considered today?
Well, I will answer the question. You could double-check, for example, whether or not the buffer zones you have in the initiative would actually defeat the purpose because they're so, because the distance is too long that you might eliminate otherwise appropriate space. That's one. Two, they've raised a legitimate question about proportionality throughout the city, which I know is a concern of my council members. And they've raised a couple of things. By the way, I'm not telling you, you've got to take all these amendments. I'm not telling you. I really am not. I'm saying, you know, this is the flaw in this process, and you do hold a hammer here, and you wield it well. But... We might, we might actually be able to improve the thing, and you got my commitment that I'm going to support.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think what I'm, what I'm trying to process right now is the fact that, you know, we've all had a pretty open dialogue for these last two months. I mean, you and I talk several times a week about this measure. So I, there's been opportunities for us to kind of talk these items through and vet them. I think in terms of you talking about a public process and letting the public weigh in, I would argue that there's no better public process than the ballot process to let the public weigh in, right? Because ultimately, one way or the other, we're going to spend this fall vetting this proposal with voters and getting them to understand and buy into...
Are you getting picked up for your right?
Matt, Maria, turn off your phone, please. A public meeting here, please. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the other point I would make is that, you know, I'm glad to see you all. I appreciate all the work that this, that you, Mayor, and this council has done on these issues over the years. And I appreciate that all of these ideas are being brought up this evening for this meeting. And I guess what I would just point out is that, you know, this ballot measure is going to proceed one way or the other this November, and voters are going to have a chance to weigh in on a framework. But you all meet every Tuesday where you shape policies and you make decisions on programs about how this city addresses these issues. And so to the extent that there was, our proposal was, for instance, it was silent on concentration because we didn't, we didn't have a reason to change your policy one way or the other. But once you all brought up the over-concentration issue, from my perspective, that's something you could have done any given Tuesday. And so the fact that you want to use this ballot measure as a vehicle for some of these things, I understand that. But I look at you all as policymakers who meet every Tuesday. You could, you could do any number of these things yourselves through your legislative process. And so for me, I guess I'm trying to understand why these things need to be put into a ballot measure.
No, I have to say that because I'm sure my...
Councilmember Valenzuela, hold on here, please. I've got to keep some control. I'll give you one more time, and then I'm going to move on to Vice Mayor Ashby, okay? So go ahead, respond, and then I'm going to turn it over to...
Thank you. I just, I need to say that the representation of this process sedate is really not fair. And I don't appreciate, because what I'm trying to do, I don't care what happened before this moment. We're trying to have a conversation about what do you think about these amendments? And I shared with you that map that I just showed when we talked months ago. And so you knew that that was a concern. We told you that was a concern back then, and it wasn't addressed. And so we're presenting it tonight to say, "Well, can this be addressed?" So I think to portray this as a back and forth that's been happening for months is just wildly not okay because that hasn't been the process it's been in. We're meeting with the city manager. He's bringing something forward to us today. We have every right as a council to say, "We have other ideas. We have other needs. We're hearing other concerns from our community." And all I'm asking is for an answer on if, what you think about these amendments. And if you don't know yet, if you need to confer with folks, I support pushing this to Tuesday. It's just, it's less than a week ahead.
So, Councilmember, to be direct...
And so if I could finish my sentence, that would be really helpful.
So sorry.
That would be helpful. I think that this is a really raw moment for our community, and you did a great job of representing that when you commented on the comments made earlier. And I just need you to understand that it feels a little counterproductive to recognize that that's a really raw moment and that we're trying to process a really major policy shift for our city and that maybe we need more than two days to do that right now. And I know we're policymakers. We should be able to do both things at once, but we're also human. And we need a little bit more time to process this. So if you're not ready to answer the question, I hope you'll consider being okay with us voting on this on Tuesday. And that's my last...
Councilmember, thank, thank you. I want to move on to Vice Mayor Ashby. Hear from others, go ahead.
So, Mr. Conway, I got to be honest with you, it's hard not to be frustrated in this moment, right? It's a, I feel a little jammed up here, whether or not, you know, we talk about homelessness for years. So the idea that we haven't been talking about homelessness that anybody would assert is not true or fair or accurate. But at the same time, putting a ballot initiative forward to be halfway through collecting signatures and having that ballot initiative be so out of line that it would literally create insolvency concern for this city puts us in a tricky spot because you have presented the challenge to us. Either we proceed as a group with a ballot initiative that could potentially take our city to insolvency, or you take a ballot initiative that our city staff, our city attorney, our city manager have worked very hard to try to make less likely to create insolvency, and we either accept it or we don't. And I sort of, that's a very interesting spot to put your counsel in. And so in some ways, I want to tell you, I appreciate your frustration right now, but you can't have it both ways. You put us in the spot, so you're going to be the recipient of the frustration. And I will remind you that you are not a former city staffer of just some department somewhere. You are a former chief of staff to a mayor. So darn good and well how this process works and exactly what we're up against. And so I just, I want to put that out on the front because I think it's important. That's just the truth. Those are just facts, all of that. That, all of that being said, I have a few comments that I'd like to run through, Mayor. One is, I don't need another week because I don't think anything is going to change in a week. I think this is exactly what we needed, this opportunity to have a very open and raw dialogue, as Councilwoman Valenzuela has stated. Might have been nice if it didn't happen in the worst week in the city's history. That would have been great. But delaying it now, I don't see that turning into a benefit for us. I just don't. I think it'll be complicated and create more problems for us than if we just hash it out now and we take the time it takes tonight for everybody to get their input in and have a dialogue. If we were talking about implementation of an ordinance, I would, there's no way I would vote on it to tonight. But we're not talking about that. We're talking about whether or not we're going to put an item on a ballot and then have a very long, very robust, multi-month conversation about whether or not to vote for it. And by the way, I've been on this dais long enough to know that a yes vote tonight to put something on the ballot does not mean that every council member supports it. It means they support it going on the ballot. And there will still be many steps along the way where council members may say, "I don't support that ballot initiative, but I did put it on there for this reason or that reason, so that the community could vote on it." And I reserve the right to decide whether or not I'm going to endorse this ballot measure down the road. Because quite frankly, the most important question asked today, asked by Councilmember Vang, is where is the county? Everyone is telling us, "Oh, we have the county's commitment. Oh, they're going to come behind you. Oh, they're, we're going to hit them up next, public pressure." Yep, the mayor has been here for five years, pushing that county, pushing, pushing, pushing. And this ordinance is focused on housing, which is fair and smart of you, Daniel, because that is what the city does. It is not focused on mental health and treatment and services and wraparound supports. Because that is not what the city does. It's what the county does. But it is what will make a difference for the people who are unhoused in our city. And we could build houses into eternity, but if there are no services provided, no wraparound components, no plans to help people deal with domestic violence and drug addiction and PTSD and all the things that you've heard about, we're not really making any progress. And so I just think that's really important to talk about. The county can't just be sort of like, "We'll go get them after this." It's not right. It's not right that this isn't a county-wide initiative. So my first question, just for you, Daniel, is why isn't this a county-wide initiative? Why didn't you initially do a county-wide initiative?
Thank you so much for that question, Vice Mayor. To be clear, our coalition is committed to seeing both a citywide and a countywide measure on the ballot this November. We've been talking to the Board of Supervisors and County Executive Ann Edwards for weeks now. We've made it very clear that our expectation is exactly what you said, which is there is a symbiotic relationship between the city and the county on this issue. And that for us to do this comprehensively and humanely, to truly help the people that need help the most, we need this county to be a part of this solution and to come at it at scale, not to throw us crumbs, but we need a few loaves. And so they've heard it loud and clear. You've heard from at least a few of the supervisors publicly that they have indicated that they are willing to follow the city's lead and support this kind of approach if the city takes this lead. And so again, as I look at the nine of you tonight, you have to know that you have your five colleagues at the Board of Supervisors watching this, and they're watching your behavior, and they're going to, they're going to calibrate accordingly. And so I think that's why when my coalition, when we had our, when we had our press conference earlier this afternoon, you know, you heard from the Metro Chamber, you heard from Region Business, you heard from the Police Officers Association, you heard from others who all said, "Now's the time. We're ready to work with you. Let's help the people that need help the most. And as soon as we get this done with the city, we're ready to go off after the county."
But I didn't hear from the county at that press conference. And so my question is, you have a city ordinance circulating for signatures, and you have every intent for a county. Do you have a county ordinance circulating for signatures?
No, but we are...
Okay, wait, wait, wait. I don't need further explanation. I understand. I understand. We've heard some county folks say they will do it. We've heard you guys say, "I believe you that you're committed to having the county doing it." But the initial move was to pressure the city. I'm very familiar with this play. I too have been here for a minute or two. And using the city to leverage the county is about as old as the dawn of time. I understand it, but we need to make sure that the county comes along. And the amendment that Councilmember Vang has asked for that says this will be implemented when the county does it too ought to be strongly considered by this council. I will tell you, I have over-concentration issues too, but I am satisfied with the additional language that was read into the record earlier by the city clerk. I understand why some folks might feel it's not strong enough. But I do think it gives this council and the mayor and the city manager room to move a little bit more and also prohibits over concentration in one area. So I'm satisfied with that language and don't need that to be changed for me. But 6,000 units, which is approximately what we would be looking at as a finish line, is unrealistic. And asking us in your section 12, where you say that we shall provide, which Matt Ruiac went over, shall provide 50% of our unobligated resources, up to $5 million. Shall is a big difference from May. It means we're required. It means next year, you guys, if we haven't opened 6,000 new units, and by the way, we don't get to count Jay's WX or Councilmember Vang's Meadowview or Councilmember Laloey's Grove, none of those count towards this, which I also think is unfair. They don't count towards it, Jeff. Only the ones that aren't built yet, as far as they've told me. That's my understanding. So I, I think those, that's going to be hard for us. We're, the 6,000 will be an unattainable number, which means we won't get to that finish line. And then every year, at the end of the year, when we have any unallocated budget, shall, meaning must, use half of it to continue to get towards that goal, up to at least $5 million. And that's a, that is a big commitment from this council without, you know, putting any beat on the bone, so to speak, to make sure that the county is all in. So, you know, those are my concerns, that WX and Grove and Meadowview are not included. That the 6,000 units is a tough, tough finish line. I think over concentration has been handled for me, and my biggest issue of all is the county. So from my perspective, since we're keeping a tally here, I don't need the over concentration changes. I don't need the buffer changes. I think we can work around that later. I think those things will be, I think we'll be able to make all of those things work. I don't see those as the biggest issues. I see the county's lack of participation as the biggest issue. I appreciate the over concentration language that has been added. I would like to see Councilmember Vang's language or some form of it that says, good to go, as long as the county comes to, as part of this dialogue. And I would love to know what my colleagues think about that as well. But I'm ready to support this going on the ballot today. I don't need another week. And I'm ready to have a long conversation with our community in the months to come about what that looks like. Because tonight's vote doesn't mean we implement. So that's where I'm at there.
Very helpful. I think this, I want to get everybody sort of on the record in terms of where their thoughts are because then we have to think about how we move forward here. Councilmember Chenier, Laloey, Geta, and then I get back to Councilmember Harris.
Well, one thing, Mayor, just I want to ask a question about process. You want us to all weigh in, then we go to public comment, then we're coming back to.
Yeah, 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 we're going to do it a little differently. Yes.
So, and, and Mr. Harris's motion has not had a second yet, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I, I'm going to go ahead and second it just to put it on for discussion. And if, if there are substitute, is there a substitute?
And Councilmember Vang may have a substitute come.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mayor Ashby may have a substitute. I don't know.
I get that. Okay, so let, let me address. I, I'm also would, would like another week, but I'm also ready to move this forward. I think that we've been talking about these concepts for a long time. I actually very much appreciate the business community coming forward and taking leadership in this. And I look at this a little bit differently and had this been initiated by the council and worked on by staff and developed by staff, it would probably look a little bit different. But I want to respect the work that's been done by a group of individuals who care deeply about the city and are willing to put both their, their time and their effort and their money behind like this. I don't agree with every piece of it. I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that it, I think it's imperfect. But I, I, I think that, you know, the frustration level in our city is at an all-time high. The challenge that we have is probably as much as I've ever been involved with in my 20 years as an elected official. And I, I think that we can move forward with it. I do think, and I want to address the three pieces that council, councilwomen, Valenzuela and Vang have brought forward. On, on the county, I'll just go in and revert here just for the help. On, on the county piece, I, I don't think that we should link this to the county taking action. I understand that frustration. I understand the need for that to make all of this work. But I, I'm not sure that, I would appreciate if the county were taking actions on things and linking it to actions that the city would have to take. I understand this is a really important issue and I understand where their lane is, where their funding comes from and what their responsibilities are. I'm a big believer in public accountability. And I, I think that's who needs to hold the county responsible and accountable if, if they don't do it. So I, I'm not really in favor of linking this to a county thing because if they decide not to do this, we can't stop. We have too much responsibility to our own constituents, to our own city. We all get the calls on a daily basis and I think we need to. As far as the first two items, and, and I, I think this is a question maybe for Mr. Ruiac, if he's the one that's been working with this or Ms. Alcala. Is there any reason that the city within the confines of or the parameters of the initiative itself couldn't pass an ordinance or, or pass policy that takes into account and implements the first two items that were brought by the two councilwomen? Assuming that it still fits the overall parameters of the initiative. So, yeah, the concentration issue, which I think is important, could, you know, we can, as long as we make the citywide numbers, but within that force ourselves to do district by district, does that work? There any reason we couldn't do that?
No, there isn't. That's a simple answer. No, there isn't.
And, and the same on the second item?
That's correct.
Okay. So I, I think that the council can still take action, again, within the parameters that are set forth here. Now, and, and so again, I, I'd be willing to, I'll second Mr. Harris's motion. I'd be willing to move forward tonight. I think there's a lot that we'll need to do. And frankly, the, the hard work will, will be the implementation and bringing services to folks. There's a lot of work that's been done. And Jeff, I believe that we've housed something like 14,000 people in the, in the time that Mayor Steinberg has been mayor. I think he has brought forth, you know, considerable numbers of issues. And, and the right to shelter, which I was not, which I thought had its own imperfections, you know, was the beginning of this conversation, not the end of the conversation. So with that, that's my piece at this point. And I actually look forward to public comment as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Laloey, Mayor Protim Geta, Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And, and I want to thank all my colleagues for some wonderful information and concerns that has been shared. You know, I'm a very strong supporter of the business community. Obviously, without them, we will not have our city. But at the same time, I know that the existing ordinance, if that should go to a ballot and if it should pass, the business community would also need to take this into consideration that the situation that we're in right now, it's going to get extremely worse simply because of budget cuts that needs to be made in order to be able to simply sit down and answer every lawsuit and litigation that's going to be filed against the city. That will result in youth services to be cut. That would result into funding for the police department to be cut, which I've, again, I've been very vocal and I'm 100% against that. So some of the concerns that have been discussed are real. I want to make sure that everybody knows that in the last year that I've been part of this council, the city has done everything possible to fight this situation we're in with the unhoused. We've spent, we've spent money without even thinking twice about it. We have created a master siding plan. We've sat down and we've talked to county. I know the mayor and the city manager, Mr. Howard Chan. They've been on, God, I think every week I would hear, we just got off this two by two with the, the county. And there's three by three by county, four by four by county. So the fact remains that within the last 365 days, we have not been able to really sit down with the county and come up with a plan, a solution, which technically it's in their court that they need to handle. To sit here and play ignorance and say these encampments, they're not, there, there's, there's tiers of different people. The reality remains that majority of these encampments have vulnerable individuals that need rehab before they need housing. They need mental illness support before they need housing. So if we're not sure that we can get these services from the county, we can agree to everything that is in this original agreement. But we'll be in the same exact spot a year from now, probably in a, in a much, much worse situation. And so to, to kind of support my colleague, Councilmember Vang, there, there are two regarding their, what, what she proposed. I think there is a concern and I, and I'm very thankful and I'm very grateful that we did put the language of, of over concentration. But if we'll make every district to be equally responsible for, I think it would give myself, Councilmember Vang and Councilmember Geta a little bit of a breathing room. Because history has shown that anything that takes place that is a, that's a tester, it falls within certain districts. I think the latest one, which I guess it's, it's a positive move for, for city as far as revenue goes, is cannabis. When you look at the majority of cannabis, its concentration is District Six, District Two, and District Eight. So we want to make sure that the residents and the businesses of these three districts have the same voice, same values, same respect as other residents and businesses throughout the city. So the over concentration, I think it's only fair and I, I don't think, I don't see why anyone would fight that to say, hey, it needs to be equaled out through the city with every district. You know, I don't think the business group will be concerned with that language. The county part, again, I'm being, and, and I think, Daniel, I'm glad that you've been part of the city and as, as Vice Mayor alluded to, you're a chief of staff to, to a mayor. We don't have, we don't have the fund. There's no money. Unless you get the county right to the table so we can talk and we can create the systems, the city doesn't have the fund. I mean, already, and correct me if I'm wrong, Howard, we're spending $33 million annually on the unsheltered. So, is, am I correct on that, Howard? I don't want to.
That is correct and country law number one, that's going to be.
I'm, I want to make sure that this number resonates with our residents. $33 million has been, we're, we're committing to that we're taking from potentially our general funds, if there is no outside money coming in. So we're taking that money to the unhoused. That's $33 million for communities like me that don't have sidewalks, for communities like mine that don't have speed bumps, for communities like mine that we don't have more programs for youth to make sure they're more focused rather than getting involved with gangs. So I am a little bit concerned when I hear, as soon as we get this done, we're going to go talk to county. Well, again, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, correct me if I'm wrong. Haven't you guys have had weekly conversations with the county, at least for the last 12 months that I've been on this seat or every other week? Hasn't those discussions been taking place?
Yes, but it's, of course they have, but we don't have a formal agreement.
Right, so and that's what I'm getting into. So the, the conversation's been there. I think the city has put its best effort and, you know, from the county, I think they have, but there's been no agreements. So we come tonight, we agree on this, and then we go and talk to county. And what if the county just is too slow to act? So that's my, my, those are my two major concerns. I still like this motion. I think we've done it one year with basically on policies that were encouraged by our advocates and activists. And we are here today. So I think it's, it's time for us to take another route to find a better solution so we can get a better spot in a year from now. But not to have the county and not to identify that every district has to take its own responsibility to provide these shelters. I think it might be a little bit premature. But again, as far as the language of this ordinance and what, what's being proposed, I'm, I'm in and I'll vote for it tonight. I, I agree with Vice Mayor. I, I don't know what another week is going to do for us. It is what it is. We've tried it all last year. It's time for new activities. But the, the concentration piece and the county piece, I think it's something that definitely needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Laloey. Let me, I want to get, make sure everyone member gets through the first round and then I'll come back to those who've already spoken. Mayor Protim Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, first, you know, I'm also kind of the mind, you know, how much, how much can we accomplish in the next week? But, but I do think that, I have a question here for the city manager. My recollection, and, and I'm trying to look through our minutes, but my understanding is when we approved the, the comprehensive master plan and even in, in previous iterations, we have taken a vote and an action on over concentration. That, is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
I don't have the, the vote in front of me, but I do recall that each of the districts were to bring forward sites within their. That is what was ultimately adopted through the Siding Plan Resolution. And as we go through this, maybe I can have our staff pull up and see if, if there was language called for in there. But I do recall each council member putting forward location.
Well, no, I think what I'm getting at here is I, because I recall making the motion and one of those points was, regardless, even on the execution of that we didn't over concentrate in one district or none, even as we looked at each district. So I, I'd like to make sure that as a matter of public. I, I'd like to make sure that as a matter of public record, that we have a standing policy that over-concentration is a principle. I do agree with Councilmember Vang about making sure that, that, that those loopholes or ways to avoid over-concentration, but I think that can be done right through ordinance. And so if this process was to move forward, you know, my recommendation to the council is that city manager bring back ordinance that we vote on, then in future, council would have to actually vote to repeal an over-concentration ordinance. It would be up to the city manager. Because when drafting, I mean, a charter change, you know, there are things that we would have to go, if you make the, the charter too prescriptive, anytime there is an issue, it becomes, it becomes, we have to either go back to the voters, go to the courts. And I think we can achieve some of those issues there. On, on the distance requirement, the challenge of 300 feet also, while I, I agree with the, with it and this is where we ended up with 500 feet, we've gone through and used 600 feet for other land use decisions. 400 feet is about the size of a, of a city block. And so the, the, the distance requirement of 500 feet, I remember we brought that down further from a thousand to avoid over-concentration in district. That was something I advocated for as to make sure we bring it. But once you get below 400 feet, the average size of a city block now, could be putting a potential place between sensitive use. So the question that I ask is would 200 feet be that much more significant? A lot of that chunk in District Six is also, while it looks large and green, is landfills. So you know, I mean, they're, we're not really going to be able to them or the old gravel mining pits. And we've explored many of those locations. I think identified 21 private location, private properties in that area that, you know, either one was a tired landfill, so it had rocks that we couldn't use. Others, you know, they're already under development. So you know, I, I do, I do appreciate the size, the distance requirements. And I think the question, you know, about, you know, tying this, you know, other agency, while it adds a political it also, it could over-complicate the measure. I, I appreciate, you know, Councilmember Shenier's turn about the challenges with buying it and could, could it invalidate the measure? I didn't quite understand the city attorney's, you know, so I'll actually ask the city attorney to repeat it because I'd rather, I'd rather be very clear on the city attorney's city attorney, if you don't mind responding to question here. I, I do, if you don't mind responding to that, then I'll, I'll continue.
Please.
Okay, Councilmember, I'm going to ask Mr. Ruiac to join me because we've been discussing this offline to see what avenues the city has because I, it could be helpful to insert some language in the ordinance just to make it clear. And I know that Mr. Ruiac had a thought on that.
Question you're going back to, what ability would the city have to amend the ordinance in the future to kind of deal with these situations? Specifically, the over-concentration and the buffer zones, correct? Is that your question? Yeah, okay. So the short answer is, it requires, the, the current ordinance specifically requires the city to identify a minimum number. Right? But it doesn't say where they have to locate them. So long as the city achieves the objectives by identifying and authorizing these, nothing would preclude the city from enacting a further policy on achieving that. Unless that ordinance effectively precludes the city from meeting its objectives. But I think that could be done by adopting another order to say, here's how we're going to prioritize those sites. As long as it actually gets accomplished, right? There's still the obligation to accomplish identification and authorization of those spaces. You can't undermine that by adopting another ordinance or amending this. So you, you could adopt something that describes the methodology by which you rotate among locations or whatever, whatever the choice is to achieve. Can't make it so as to make it practically impossible to meet the objectives of the measure. Now, having said that, let me go back for a second. As, as you know, what, what the measure says is under, under state law, when voters approve a measure, and this is an ordinance, not a charter change, but when even that, when, when voters approve it, typically city councils can't ever amend it unless the measure so provides. And this one has that built in out that with a two-thirds vote by the council, the, we can amend the ordinance, but you have to achieve the purpose of the ordinance, right? So going back to my previous responses, you could say, here's how we're going to get there, but you have to do it in order to further the purposes of the ordinance. It was to spread them, allocate the spaces proportionally or how equitably across the city. That's just really an augmentation of the process to achieve it, but not frustrating the purposes. So I think you could do it. Now, the buffer zones are a little more difficult, I will say. Here's why I believe that may be a little, a challenge. And I, I'm not, I'm not saying there's a definitive right or wrong answer here, but remember you have to amend it to achieve the purpose. That provision of the ordinance, as I read it and as I understand the intent of the proponents, is that it is to put the, put the potential emergency shelter spaces at locations sufficiently distant from, I'll call them sensitive uses, right? And they're setting a minimum distance from sensitive uses. If the council were to reduce that minimum distance from a sensitive use, it would seem to go against the very purpose of that provision, right? Now, on the other hand, if because of that, and I say this, on the other hand, if those buffer zones around sensitive uses make it impractical or impossible for the city ultimately achieve objectives, but there are so few locations in the city that we can't identify and authorize emergency shelter spaces in nonbuffershown areas, then there may be the ability for the city, that would have to understand the facts on the ground as we try to implement this ordinance, whether or not that would need to be done in order to achieve its purposes. But without understanding the actual.
Yeah. It's, it's, I'm sorry, it's, it's a lot of legalese and it's, it's, I think it's hard for, I think what you're saying is I'm gonna, I'm gonna interpret it. We may not be able to overcome the buffer limitation, but we could make a case that if it defeated the purposes of the overall initiative, that could find an exception. That's what you're saying. It's, it's an open question. It's a problem, but we might be able to get around the buffer issue because of the broader requirement of the ordinance. In other words, if we can't get to 60% with the existing buffer, well, then a court would say, you know, you gotta find some exceptions to that buffer requirement. That's what I, that, that's right? Am I right? I just got an A minus. Okay, on the, on the exam, okay.
And to, if you continue with that, it could be done with the two-thirds vote of the council. Is that, is that correct?
It still requires two-thirds vote, yes.
So if we got to the situation where we saw, look, we just clearly do not have enough space. This council could, within two, two-thirds vote, take an action to say, we cannot achieve what the citizens have asked and we can change. And we would take action to find additional spaces if we found those spaces. I, I, and so to me, I think it, it does allow for us to try to achieve that. So anyway, so I think those are, I think those, that's an important point to set on the table here when we're talking about these buffer zones. Because we've gone through this, these distance requirements many times. And at first, many people pushed for a thousand feet, but we've gotten, I think, on a lot of issues, down to 500 feet. Because it does give us more options of what those viable places are. So let me, let me stop there, Mr. Mayor, and say that, you know, I believe that, you know, that the options that are, are to implement this initiative, if the citizens were to vote, pass it, we have options and avenues as a council to approve them. I don't disagree with passing an additional ordinance. I would, you know, make sure, make it extremely clear about the process to avoid over-concentration, even during implementation that we could do, that has a much more applicable point. So I do think we need to achieve that. This doesn't have to be in this.
Okay, thank you. That's, it was important, dialogue back and forth. Councilmember Jennings and I'm going back to Harris and Ashby. You have questions? I have one question, then we're going to go to public testimony.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think I'm really missing the public testimony right now as I prepare to make my comments. And so I'm looking forward to hearing what the public has to say. And I say that because while I would like to have another week, because I believe another week would give us the opportunity to have the public input that we have not been able to get. I am prepared to support the initiative measure tonight based on what, what is, where it is right now. Just, I think it's important to, to acknowledge the city manager and the work that he's done in getting this initiative to where it is right now. Because the initial initiative that we read would have put the city in financial strain. So at least when I look at this compared to the initial one, doesn't put the city in, it doesn't have the financial impact on the city budget that it would have had at the original state. So I, I, you know, I appreciate the, the three, three points that Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Vang made on, on the proportionality, the buffer zone and the county needing to be a part, a full partner. I, I totally agree with all three of those things. I think another week would allow us to take a look at those things more clearly. But either way, I'm going to support the initiative as it stands tonight or if we wait a week, move forward because of the lack of financial impact on the district.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Let me go back now to Councilmember Harris, Ashby, Valenzuela, and I'm going to ask my question, then we're going to go to public.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to keep this brief. First, we need to clear up misconception. This is not a charter change. That's been brought up by several council members. Not a charter change. This is code language. It's an ordinance. There is a very significant difference. The, the, the point I want to make here is that what Conway and company brought forward was not just simply their brainchild. This was actually something that our constituents are willing to vote for. You know, I think that this council has, to a certain extent, ignored the fact that our constituents are very frustrated with what they see in the city, and I think rightly so. But the polling clearly shows, clearly shows that the Conway initiative could pass and probably very handily. The repercussions of that for us would be dire. I understand, you know, some frustration with being what might feel cornered into a decision. I don't see it that way. I feel like a really reasonable compromise has been brought here. Something that will motivate us to move forward, which is something the mayor has always wanted. He wants the city to be compelled into more action and this alternative that we can put on the ballot will do that. So there's, there's a lot of good in this and I say, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. In an ideal world, you know, you could argue the over-concentration, the, the buffer zone and you know, leveraging the, the county, but I have to tell you, should Councilmembers Vang and Valenzuela offer those as friendly amendments, I would reject them. Because if those were placed in this, it would be too prescriptive and likely would default to the original initiative. Conway. You know, honestly, the master siding plan where we tried to get sites in every district, almost all of those sites were not tenable. We had to pare it down. There is a practicality to where sites can be found in the city. And I think that the language that the city manager offered at the outset about over-concentration suffices. As far as trying to leverage the county, we all acknowledge we can't do this without the county, but you know what? I'm tired of the feud with the county and we know that trying to force their hand is not the way to do this play. The county has a supervisor, Mr. Desmond, who is very amenable to this situation. And there is a change in the board of supervisors. There's also an election that will make a difference as well. I know that the county supervisors know themselves that they must step up to the plate here. And I believe the votes are there, but trying to force them, if we try to leverage them this way, it's just continuing this at least two decades old feud with the county. You know, you catch butterflies with honey than with vinegar. So my original motion stands, we should adopt the staff recommendation. And I hope, we really hope, strongly hope that we do so today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Vice Mayor.
With us? Did you give up on us or are you still here?
I am. I'm just juggling responsibilities, but go ahead, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just needed to hear from all of my colleagues. I'd like to ask you very pointed questions, okay? And I'm going to be really clear. I've listened to all of the suggestions and amendments and everybody's input and I'd like to ask you about two specific ones. And I think ultimately our goal here is to work with you to remove valid initiative that you are circulating because we feel that's not best for the city. And also to take the bulk of what you all have worked on here with our city staff and advance it. I see, I would like to ask you about two changes. One, and I, I will tell you from my opinion, I don't think this makes much difference for your efforts, but I defer to you because you are the holder of the ballot initiative. I, would you have a problem with removing the word citywide and making it say every district? Just that, I'm not going to ask you for any of the other buffer or as city allow or any of that, leaving all of that out. Just the every district instead of citywide. Would that be okay with you?
Sorry, I had to relocate. Were there additional changes? I mean, again, I know we've talked about the buffer piece.
One other one that I want to ask about, but I'm not going to ask you about any of the varied options or buffer zones or any of that because I think we got good direction from the city attorney about how we can handle that. Councilmember Shenier had some good suggestions. But I, I am hearing my colleagues concerned, and you know this from your time here, that sometimes districts can get overburdened. So instead of the word citywide, which was your effort to make it, you know, broad, doing every district. Look, it's still not going to be equitable inside of those districts because of all the other things, but it would at least make council members into the future like they have to be part of the solution. And that's why they're asking that question. I personally don't think it changes anything on your end, but I'm not, I'm not you, so I'm asking.
Um, my goal tonight is to have this wrapped up and approved by the council. And so I'm certainly willing to consider a, a very minor language change like that as part of it. So, so go ahead, Council, Vice Mayor.
That's one. I'll ask you the second one. I would very much like to include some language around the county. I would acquiesce that perhaps the language that Councilmember Vang and Valenzuela have put forward is a little bit too strong. But I would like to add some kind of sentence at the end that drop, we don't have to, in other words, their language specifically directed them that it must include this and it must include that. I would rather, I, I understand that you will not accept that. I, and I understand why. But what I would like to ask you to help me consider here right now, to get my colleagues on board and particularly my mayor and maybe Councilmember Valenzuela is in Vang, maybe, I can't speak for them, but I'm trying here. Could we add a sentence at the end that says that this ordinance will be implemented when the county takes action as well, either by initiative or by ballot or by a vote on their, at the council, at the county supervisors? That was the first sentence that said they could either pass an ordinance or they could do an initiative or ballot measure. That this will be triggered once they do that. Um, those are all of my changes. If you can agree to those two things, I'm going to make a substitute motion and I think that we will have some good support. And I think that we will have some good support, and I'm, I'm asking you to consider those. We do have thirteen speakers if you need to think about it.
And, and I probably will take an opportunity to think about it. But, um, you know, my goal is again to have resolution from the city tonight. But I don't think, for reasons that some of your colleagues have raised, I don't think it, it is wise for the city to condition its work on the county agreeing to work.
I would agree that the original language was too strong because it asked them, it, it prescribed for them what they had to do. And I don't think we, we've tried that in the past. It doesn't work. That's not the right thing to do. We wouldn't want them to do it to us. But saying that this will, this will start when they start really is more, I think, about a partnership. I would urge you to think about it carefully. Uh, before weighing in too hard, and I, I think that my colleagues, I think we could have broader support with that language. And it gives some level of comfort to us that the county will come in behind us with, besides just folks telling us that they'll apply pressure. And I will also say this, I think it gives you something. Because you can then go to the county and say, hey, the city has said you need to do something. Whether that's an ordinance or a ballot initiative, and since we're not prescribing it, we're really not defining that it has to be something as large as what we're doing.
Vice Mayor, I, I would just say, first of all, I appreciate your thoughtfulness and your ability and your, your desire to kind of connect these dots here. Um, and I will take the opportunity to listen to public comment before formally responding. But I think my hesitation is, is that for five plus years, our community has been waiting for city leadership and county leadership to come together around a plan and figure out a common path forward. And so for us to suddenly condition our campaign on that happening, that's a tough one. And as, and as optimistic as we are based on the comments that we've heard from board members and others at the county that they're ready to go down this path. I, I'm just deeply hesitant to condition city action on county action, so I.
I would urge you to think about it strongly because I really think this could help you make that happen. And you could be the one, this, this process could be the one that finally puts us on the same path. And I'll, I'll hand it back to the mayor, but mayor, before I make that substitute motion, I want to know that Mr. Conway will remove the ballot initiative that he has put forward. So I'm happy to come back after the comments, but mayor, I wanted to leave it with you.
Okay, so I did hear Mr. Conway say that he would agree to the district language that you suggested. And so you don't need a substitute motion on that. That could be added.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm so sorry. I guess just to clarify, what I said was, I'm willing to consider changes based on the assumption that the council is going to take action tonight to place.
We are going to take action tonight. Okay, that is clear. I've heard from everybody in terms of the process concern that I raise. I hear people want to vote tonight, so this is going to be put on tonight. I, or this is going to be voted on tonight. So I do hear. I, I did, I could put words in your mouth, but Vice Mayor Ashby suggested the language that would. Fire that every district participate in the implementation. And you were okay with, I, I assumed you were okay with that. If that's the case, it won't take a substitute motion by the Vice Mayor. Councilmember Harris might consider it as a friendly amendment if Mr. Conway is okay with that.
Mayor, I'd like to hold off on that. Also, I'm pretty sure Councilmember Harris said he would reject all of Councilmember Vang and Valenzuela's motion.
Except, except now I'm changing. I'm, I'm trying to, I'm talking to Jeff Harris now. Because if Mr. Conway's okay with your good faith effort to find a middle ground on that language, that's the way I want to do it. I don't want substitute motions unless there has to be, okay? There has to be, fine, understandably.
But for Harris, that removal of the word citywide to every district, that's it.
That was it. If this, Mr. Conway, are you okay with that? Going to vote tonight, so you already have the commitment, my support. Now you have the, now you know that we're going to vote tonight. Are you okay with the change that Vice Mayor Ashby just suggested? Are you still on the call here? Okay, let's go to the public testimony.
I have a couple more questions before.
Yeah, and I had my question too.
Yeah, you did. So just before we do that, so the public has all of the facts as they weigh in on this.
I'm sorry, in face.
If, if you, Mr. Ruak, if you are there, I have a couple of follow-ups. Because I think, um, I appreciate what you're trying to do in terms of giving us legal interpretation in real time right now. So I just want to be super specific on some of what you just said. So Councilmember Garrett was asking you about the buffer zones and that we don't have to subscribe to those. We think if we can say, hey, we can't do the broader initiative with these buffer zones in place. But would I be right then in assuming that we could only make that case once we exhausted the sites that fall outside of the buffer zone?
Yes, it would be, it might be my opinion, we have to achieve the purposes as stated, only if it was impossible to achieve those purposes, correct?
So the same issue that we outlined before around District Two, District Six, District Eight, you're going to get a lot of sites before we're going to meet that threshold. And we can say, we got to change this buffer zone to open it more sites. That would generally be our potential assumption in terms of implementation.
Yeah, whatever the facts are on the ground after we try to actually implement.
Okay, thank you. And then the second question I have for you, because we also, Councilmember Scheneer asked about doing something in ordinance. And so the second part, our second of the three, was around offering more than one option before we enforce unless it was urgent. So my reading of this ordinance as drafted, if someone is petitioning us saying you didn't take action. The city manager only has to determine that there was one option offered one time, and then by the hearing officer could say, you got to do something. So I don't know, is, are you saying, would that be your interpretation as well? Or would we be able later to say, hey, it wasn't an urgent situation. We wanted to give them a couple of choices to meet their needs? Or would we really be bound to one and done when it comes?
Well, let me just say, I'm a little confused because I think you mixed up two parts of the ordinance. Hearing examiner doesn't come in that part of when the city manager goes out to talk to a person. That's, that's a different part. That's a part when someone tries to bring a claim against the city. But currently, as currently drafted, it is correct that the four, the four criteria necessary to enforce are. Requisite beds are, are authorized, there is a space available, city manager offers a space. And that person rejects that space and refuses to move from their location. It does not, it, it does not expressly say you have to offer multiple varying spaces, correct?
And we wouldn't be able to say you have to offer multiple under circumstances because the ordinance, as it's written, really just says one.
Let's see, Councilmember, I think that we could, because this is a minimum. This is essentially Boise.
Okay.
Essentially what we're currently doing, so.
Get offered more.
Okay, that's helpful. So this, my, our next question is on infeasibility. Because part of the reason we suggested this county language is because I'm really worried we're going to end up in a situation where it's time to re-up on another twenty percent tranche of shelter beds, and we've run out of space. And I think what we know could happen is that then we're starting to have to eminent domain private property. And we're starting to have to like do some pretty extreme things to get to that next tranche. And if we don't have the county's support, then, you know, we might end up in a real bind here at some point. Because once again, we do not know the total number of what we're committing to right now. We're saying ten thousand now. It could be way more based on the point in time count this year. So do you see any option here? What would our options be if we were starting to implement and say it got time to do another twenty percent tranche? And we were looking at our options and they were pretty extreme, and we're like, all right, well, we've got some warehouses, we've got some private property. We could eminent domain to force them to let us use it for this purpose, but we're starting to run out of options. Without a public property, on property where property owners are willing to sell it to us. Is there any sort of fail safe there where we could say as a city, hey, we just can't do anymore, um, we, we've maxed out? Or would we be forced to kind of figure that out if that moment came?
We, um, the way that it's drafted, the city would need to force to figure it out. The, the duties identified in O two O, i.e. Identifying beds. Et cetera, those are mandatory duties placed upon this. So failure to achieve those. Um, obligations as stated. Would have the city be in violation of that and subject it to a lawsuit essentially. So we would be at that time forced to. Figure out, figure out a way to accomplish the directives of the ordinance.
And, and if I can add on to that, uh, under section three of the general provisions, subsection C, we were talking about this earlier. The acts can be amended by the city council on two thirds vote of the members of the council, but only to further the purposes of this act. Which could mean the council could amend this to create more ability for the council to be able to identify, or the city manager to identify more shelter spaces. So.
We'd have to figure it out. I mean, like not having an answer to that question.
But we do have flexibility here because it's not a charter amendment. I think that's. Thank you, Jeff Harris, for running.
Some, some level of flexibility, but it's still a voter initiative, which is why they're insisting on that and on ordinance change so that we wouldn't be able to change it with. So I just want to make sure it's super clear what we're signing up for here because I just want, so the reason. This measure that is circulating, these proponents say that they are trying to force the city to do productive action, but that is not true. Right? Because we have told them this measure will bankrupt us. This measure is unimplementable. And so what is happening here is we're getting put against a wall because there's no other choice. It's either something that's going to devastate our city and not help anybody, or it's us ramming through something with two days of review, right? And so I need to say that because. You're targeting the people who are trying to help, and we're, and this ordinance, as it's written, without the amendments that we've proposed, is putting us in a real situation here. It's still not getting rid of that specter over our heads. Because there is no get out of this. There is no requirement that the county help us. There's nothing in this that says we're going to have any help. And we all know, based on our lived experience trying to get these sites online, we identified tons of sites in the siding plan. And as Councilmember Harris said, a lot of them have been deemed unviable. Like this is not something we can just do and snap our fingers with. We've been trying. We really have been. We can do more, but we've been trying. And this measure is not, it is better than what is circulating. I will give everybody that. But it is still putting us in the exact same situation, and it's making a commitment to businesses and homeowners that are demanding action and end house people themselves. That we are not necessarily knowing that we're going to be able to live up to because we don't have the partnership of the county in this. And so I just have to say, I know it's an editorial comment, and I said I had questions, but like I just have to encourage us when we're listening to public comment. Think about this, colleagues. Our, our constituents are frustrated because they want action, and we all want action. And we deserve a measure that's going to actually deliver the action that we need, that's going to be implementable, that's going to get us the results that we're looking for here. And without these amendments that we've proposed, Councilmember Vang and I, I just don't see how that happens. And then we end up in a couple of years when some of you are no longer on the council, and we're left holding the bag on an ordinance and a frustrated public who says, we thought we voted for something that was going to do something, and it's still terrible out there. And so I just, I really want us to just reflect on this a little bit. Um, because we can't sign our city up for something just to say we did something, and we have to sign our city up for something that's going to work. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Scheneer, and then I will ask my question. Mayor, are you up?
All right, Mr. Conway, I, I have one more question. If you're still in a place you can answer. So would, would you agree that it will be difficult, if not impossible, for us to be successful in implementing the initiative if the county does not come in as a partner?
No, I do not agree with that.
So you think the city could do this on its own?
Absolutely. We would not have submitted the language we submitted, nor would we have agreed to these, this alternative proposal that we worked with, with your staff. If we didn't think that this was something that the city could achieve by itself. I'll even take it a step further, Councilmember Scheneer, because I have a tremendous amount of respect for you. Um, but as I think many of you know, I've spent the last two and a half years working on a lawsuit against the city and the county of Los Angeles. Where I've been working with a group called the L.A. Alliance for Human Rights, where under a very similar premise, we basically sued both the city and county of Los Angeles to say, you guys have failed to meet the crisis uh, at the scale that it needs to be met at. And so we tried to compel them through a federal lawsuit to step up and do their job. Uh, Friday, or Friday morning, last Friday morning, I was in, uh, L.A. City Hall with Mayor Garcetti and several councilmembers holding a press conference where, uh, the mayor and council and, and our group, the plaintiffs, announced a settlement where they agreed to house fourteen thousand people, uh, in relatively short order, uh, and they agreed to do it without the county. And they're focused on low acuity people, people that they feel like they have the program and services and capacity to help. Uh, but they one hundred percent feel like they can go forward down that path without the county. Does the city of L.A. want the county? Yes, and you can look at the comments they made at the press conference where they were scathing of the county's lack of engagement. But I think if in nothing else, this rift that we've now seen surface between the city and county of Los Angeles. Becomes a teachable moment for our, our friends at the county of Sacramento. Um, where they see what happens when the city and the county part ways versus what I think we have a chance to do here is to create a new model of city and county cooperation and allowing the voters to step forward and put their fingerprints on it this November. So that is why Councilmember Scheneer, I absolutely do feel like the city could be successful without the county's help.
And what, what's the, the city of L.A.'s budget?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I also know that their homelessness numbers are, um, many multiples what the city of Sacramento's is, like something about sixty thousand.
Right, but they're, they have a multi-billion dollar budget for the city.
Correct, but again, they've made, over the last two years of negotiating with them, they've made all the same arguments that you all have made in terms of the county being better equipped to address mental health and substance use disorders and all those things. I do not disagree at all. I think you absolutely need to have the county at the table, which is why I'm committed to having two ballot measures on the ballot this November. As is our coalition of business, labor, public safety and community groups. Like, we think we have a real shot of doing it right this November in Sacramento.
So is, is there a commitment that if the county does not do it voluntarily, you'll go out and collect signatures for the county?
Uh, realistically, we couldn't do that this election cycle, but I think twenty twenty four would be a real possibility.
All right, and could I ask Ms., uh, our Vice Mayor, can you explain the language again? I don't think I quite understood it that you're looking at on the, on the county part.
My substitute motion will be to move forward the, I, as, as it is. But changing the word citywide to every.
Oh, that, that one I got. I'm just, this is the last piece.
And then adding at the end the two lines that Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Vang put up. They just said, this will be, Councilmember Valenzuela, can you put that up really quick? It might be helpful.
Yeah, this act will be effective when the county of Sacramento, either by ordinance or by voter initiative. A little bit longer, but I think you wanted it a little.
Yeah, I think we want to cut it off there. So we would say, this act will be effective when the county of Sacramento, either by ordinance or by voter initiative acts, period, or yeah, acts.
And we, and we're not, we're not defining what, we're not defining what that means.
Correct, because I think that's too much, and that, that goes a step too far.
Yeah, uh, so just for me, it's still problematic for me. I certainly would not want the opposite where we're doing something in the county. Or we're not doing something that, that the county wants us to do. So I, I, I would have a problem voting for it in, in that manner. I think there's other ways that we can work in. I do want to say that I think our relationship with the county has been improving. I know that they're looking to open sites pretty rapidly here. They have, I think that the enormity of the problem and the tipping point in doing something about it has, has reached a point where they see a need. And so, um, I, I would like to, I, I'm good with the city, the, every district. I think that's important. Um, but that would be kind of the limit.
Councilmember Scheneer, let me ask you a question. Because we have Mr. Conway telling us that he absolutely believes that the county will help. He also is telling us that he thinks we can do it on our own. Every member of this dais knows we cannot do it on our own. We've all just laid that out there very clearly. What would be the harm in us adding a line that says that this, that the, that the city ordinance will be applicable when the county acts? And we're literally not defining how they act. They could say that they'll, they're going to help us. They could say that they're going to provide mental health services at the facilities that we open. They could open their own rehab facilities, anything that they're doing. In fact, what you just described that they planned would then trigger it. But otherwise, if they don't do any of those things, which is exactly what they've done to Daryl for the last five years, not act. If they continue to do that, then we're just left out there by ourselves to find six thousand units for homeless folks. And there's nothing stopping from people in the county from moving two blocks into the city. And now they're our problem instead of the county's problem, and they, and they're, they, our numbers grow and grow and grow. And every year in perpetuity, we have to come up with fifty percent of our unobligated funds at the end of every budget session. Which you and I have been here long enough to know there will be plenty of years where we're at a deficit. And then, and then what happens? So I, I appreciate that folks are willing to take the district and city. I don't think it makes any difference. But I feel like this council should add some. But I feel like this council should add some line and I'd be fine, Councilmember Chenier, if you have an idea of how we could dull it down even more. Would, I'd be okay with that.
We did say we were going to listen to the public testimony and noodle on it when it comes time to motions. We can do that. But I'm going to, I want to get Mr. Conway on the record simply about the other change, which is district change. But we can, we can get that after we hear the public. I'm going to take.
Okay, that's fine. I'm happy to come back. I will think about it. I don't know that the language you just had actually means anything. If we don't define acts, they could say what they're doing is fine. So I want us to have a good relationship with the county. I think we need each other. I'm skeptical of L.A.'s ability to be successful on their own without recreating a social service agency. And I think that this council has said many times, that's not where we, we have the ability to go, nor do we want to. I would ask Mr. Conway to think about this issue over the next 13 speakers as well and see if he has any, any thoughts or recommendations.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask my question now. This is a substantive question. This is for the city manager, the city attorney and Mr. Conway. And it is an ambiguity in the way this is written. As I understand, as I read this, the city has two obligations. One is to get to 60% within financial resources. That's a mandatory obligation. And frankly, I think that may be the most important part of the initiative. But the second thing is section, if I can find it here. Looking on page 13 of, 12 and 13 of 24, 12.100.030, where it limits the city's ability to enforce unlawful camping, to enforce unlawful camping unless the city meets four tests. And essentially those four tests are that we offer somebody something, which is really been the basis of my argument for a long time. And that the individual refuses. Okay, that's good. That's the nexus. Then it goes on to say that notwithstanding that provision, that the city may still enforce to prohibit encampments on public or private property without regard to the four-part test. I talked to the city manager and the city attorney about this, and as I understand it, that under this new ordinance, city would in most cases not be able to move somebody from a tent encampment unless we offered them a real alternative. But that the city could quote enforce by cleaning up encampments, by cleaning up encampments and by removing dangerous items. That's the distinction that is intended by the two seemingly contradictory sections that I wrote. And Mr. City Manager and Madam City Attorney and Mr. Conway, I'd like to hear whether or not I just, I just described the differentiation correctly.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll give the non-legal answer first and maybe Mr. Ruiya can come in behind me here. We did have this conversation about enforcement and the distinction that you, you read, it draws, the distinction is that we are not going to be enforcing encampments of four or more individuals unless those four tests are met. With the exception of those two code sections that you just read off, I don't have in front of me, that are part and parcel of the frequently asked question document that the city attorney's offices pulled together for us. And they include critical infrastructure issues, blocking of the public right of way, private property, illegal parking. Those things will continue to be enforced outside of those provisions that you read.
Okay, so obviously this whole ordinance does not apply to the vehicle issue. I've understood it's just tent encampments, but so long as a tent encampment is not, is not at critical infrastructure or is not impeding kids, for example, from going to and from school, the city cannot, under this new ordinance, move people unless they offer them an alternative, correct?
I'm going to ask Mr. Ruiya. I mean, the answer is yes, we will not, we will not.
That's a policy decision on how we want to go about enforcing our code, right? So we never have an obligation to enforce.
But I, what's the protection against unreasonable enforcement? You're basically setting a standard where you're saying you're not going to move people unless there's an alternative. Is that the intent of this?
Well, this, this, I will say that the way this was crafted, this ordinance tracks the way that the initiative ordinance set up the situation.
That's not what I'm asking.
Okay.
So that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking whether or not the intent of this ordinance is to say, we're not moving people unless they're blocking public right of way, unless they're blocking critical infrastructure, unless we offer them an alternative.
I will say that's not the way the language reads. So, so, so since we tracked the, we tracked the initiative opponents' language, I can't say what their intent was, but I can tell you the practical effect of it is that encampments as drafted in 030 are not subject friction as stated in the four-part test earlier. By structurally speaking, encampments do not get that four-part test before enforcement is taken against them.
That makes absolutely no sense. Mr. Ruiya, you talk in circles respectfully. That makes absolute, that makes absolutely no sense.
Mayor.
Come me out here, please, because.
Have a discussion. And what I told you was that encampments is not the same as taking enforcement action against individuals. Taking enforcement action against individuals is currently governed by Boise, the Boise case, which we have encapsulated in our FAQs. And that's what the city manager was referring to. The FAQ set out when the city can and can't take enforcement action. That is not changing.
What does it mean? What then, what does, what does 030 mean? When, what does the four-part test mean? What protection does it provide the individual who is claiming that that you shouldn't move me unless you offer me an alternative? What is the import of 12.100.030?
12.100.030 refers to unlawful camping. We cannot take any kind of enforcement action against an individual for unlawfully camping unless those four points are met.
Okay, so that's, that's true. So then what can you take enforcement action for?
Well, what we can do is manage the encampments that are on public property.
This is helpful. Go ahead.
Mandate.
What do you mean by manage the encampments?
Cleaning up the debris, going in there and doing whatever we needed to do to make sure that no nuisances were created. There's a number of things that the city could do. This would mandate it and it would be part of the implementation plan. It's, it would be part of the things that the city manager would oversee and make sure happened. Probably have to add some more money for forensic clean, probably have to add some more money for monitor. Those are the kinds of things that this initiative would require the city.
And thank you. That, I think, provided some clarity that the notwithstanding means that you can manage the encampments to ensure that they are clean, but you can't move people unless the four-part test is met, correct?
Unless they're in the middle of J Street or they're on a critical.
I understand that, with those exceptions, but I think that clears it up. Mr. Ruiya, thank you. And I'm sorry, I've just, this is such an important point that I needed, I needed clarity on this. And now I feel like I do. All right, let's turn it over to members of the public for for testimony. How many do we have, Madam Clerk?
May I have 23 members signed up to speak? First is Robert Copeland.
I want to say Mr. Conway's plan has so many holes in it that you can drive a truck through it. I mean, he didn't consult the homeless advocate, what they want. We're going to fight this with all our power. Two, our city council has failed to help the homeless for years since when KJ was mayor. I know five of you were on that board. Three, what will the punishment be if they're asked to move and they don't move? Four, where's the housing? I don't like this plan of Mr. Conway's. I will vote no in November if his plan is on the ballot. Five, Angela Ashby says, his, Mr. Conway's plan has a lot of risk financially for the city. I don't like the plan. I don't like the alternative. I think you should work with the homeless advocates and the public before you make a decision. Come up with a better plan to help the homeless. Get them housing. Get them the county a board with mental health, drug rehab. I don't like the plan.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Liz Lauren, Lauren Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, city manager and staff. Liz Lauren Williams calling in on behalf of the Downtown Sacramento Partnership to express our support for the staff-proposed Emergency Shelter and Enforcement Act of 2022 ordinance before you tonight. We applaud the city for their continued collaboration with community leaders to review a thoughtful and strategic approach to addressing the unhoused crisis within our city. Ending homelessness must be a priority for Sacramento, and there is no question that a holistic approach needs to be explored to bring the most vulnerable off the streets and provide a clean, safe and welcoming environment for all. Ensuring safety is a priority downtown, and we will continue to be at the forefront in the light of this past weekend's event. The homeless crisis impacts every part of our community and we cannot afford to wait to provide capacity for safe and secure places to go so that we no longer have individuals dying on our city streets. We know this ordinance may not be perfect, but it has the ability to bring a balanced approach to simultaneously build capacity for the unhoused shelter while nurturing the vitality of our communities and business corridors. While Downtown Partnership supports the ordinance before you, we continue to stress the importance and need for the city and county to work collaboratively to ensure success of attaching homeless services to solutions. Downtown Partnership stands ready to be part of the efforts to end homelessness and looks forward to working in concert with the city towards satisfying its community needs through quality of life investments for all. Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight.
Comments. Our next speaker is Jenna Abbott.
Mayor and council and Mr. Conway, my name is Jenna Abbott and I'm the Executive Director for the River District. Before I go any further, I want to address the many comments that were made on overconcentration of homeless services and shelters. If anyone understands the impact of overconcentrating an area, it is the River District. And frankly, I'm happy to see that there is will on the council to roll these things out citywide. It is necessary. The River District strongly supports the staff-created compromise that comes before you tonight. We would also really encourage you to vote on this tonight. I agree with the colleagues on the council who said that nothing will be accomplished by waiting another week. The citizenry, the businesses and Sacramento in general has been waiting for quite some time. I urge you, all of you, my colleagues and my friends, to vote for what the city manager and city staff put in front of you tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
Your comments. Next speaker is Jamison Parker.
Mayor and councilmembers, Jamison Parker with the Midtown Association. I just wanted to start by thanking everyone for keeping the topic as a priority for our city. It continues to be the number one issue to hear from stakeholders on a basis. So it's important that we drive towards solutions that individuals experiencing homelessness find a path into stability and support. To demonstrate the dire need in our community, I want to share that Midtown consistently sees an increase in safety-related issues. Order one of 2021 recent activity and safety-related catch calls. Need to develop a coordinated and comprehensive approach to addressing homelessness in our city and our region is more important today than it has ever been. And we wanted to applaud the work of the city manager, ballot initiative proponents, full city council for looking at this and taking the next steps and this even to prioritize offering the stability for our unhoused individuals through safety, shelter and camping in the city. As Midtown has shared in past during conversations with the comprehensive siding plan, as well as the right to shelter ordinance, with the implementation of short-term shelter beds, we encourage the city to continue to look at more permanent, long-term solutions for housing. The conversion of hotels, development of permanent supportive housing and other housing options will be crucial to make sure that individuals are given the opportunity to exit homelessness. We agree wholeheartedly that the ballot initiative is a strong shelter beds within our city. There needs to be a much more holistic conversation had with the agencies and organizations, including the county, that have dedicated resources around dealing with homelessness, including mental health, substance abuse and human services, especially on our regional level. Crucial for our individuals experiencing homelessness is to have the ability to stay in places where they can get the attention and services. Takes steps in that direction and we look forward to work as this initiative moves.
Your comments. Our next speaker is PJ.
Yes, hi, thanks. Do not fast track this. This measure is punitive and I know the mayor has a tendency towards punitive measures when addressing people with trauma on top of trauma on top of trauma resulting in their homelessness. I do support the amendments of Councilmember Vang and Valenzuela. However, if the city and the county are doing their jobs and there is no reason why these folks shouldn't be housed, the reality is the failing is your own. There is no reason why they should be penalized. Add to that that the only way to get the numbers that this measure is talking about and the timeframe it's talking about would necessitate creating large encampments on some of the only city-owned land that I know that is large enough, namely the 100 acres in District Eight. And that's untenable. This issue affects every neighborhood across the city and there is no reason why any one or two districts should shoulder the entire responsibility themselves. I'm tired of you taking advantage of poor and marginalized communities so that rich communities can retain their comfort. This is literally what we are trying to get away from. We decry redlining and yet you continue to push for policies that disproportionately negatively impact those same communities. The fact is, is that this has been tried in small measure and Chico got slapped down when they tried to categorize something as shelter that wasn't. Stick to your comprehensive siding plan. Insist to council members who barely did enough to get a D on the assignment, actually follow through with the promises of the siding plan, namely actual housing. I also heard no onus on the city as far as the robustness of the offer from the city. I can easily see someone offered insufficient housing for an insufficient time period in inhumane conditions and then refusing such treatment is then criminalized. Boise defined behavior as cruel and unusual punishment. Stop trying to skirt that and get as close to cruel and unusual as legally allowable. That doesn't make you a great city. It doesn't even make you a good city. It makes you contemptible. I'd also like to know how many of the e-commerce support and oppose this. And I'd like to ask that that be read prior to the vote of future items so that those constituents can't just be ignored. Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker is Maria Elena.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. I wanted to start off by saying that this initiative, it needs to be supported by the county. Someone, one of the previous commenters brought up Kevin Johnson. I'm sorry. This has been an initiative and a problem since before Kevin Johnson, when Heather Fargo was mayor and she opted to put in feral cat housing over housing people. The county support is necessary because the housing right now or the housing options are oversaturated and leave very little accessibility to necessary services that the city can provide to these people. And while Mayor Steinberg wants to talk about germs and the county, I want to talk about the germ that he gave to the county with mental health court and how that has been manipulated and is underserving the most vulnerable members of our community while continuing to criminalize them. So I don't see how this initiative moving forward is going to help the unhoused. Furthermore, it's very interesting to me that the county, or I'm sorry, the city is ready to move on an issue that is being proposed by business owners and former coworkers and saying that this is what is best for individuals. I'm very offended when a council member sits here and says that the public is not causing again on the issue when a lot of us have experienced homelessness and for you to sit here and tell us what we, what we know to be true and what we have experienced in decades of this issue being drawn out and made worse. We're at these numbers because y'all failed to work together in the beginning. So yes, necessary language to the county saying that they need to move on this and needs to be there. And this is ridiculous. This is absolutely absurd. You're putting your friends and your colleagues before your citizens. Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker is Brandon Black.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Brandon Black, Director of Public Policy and Advocacy for the Sacramento Metro Chamber here. We want to thank the city manager, mayor and council for your leadership and for hearing this item tonight and to Mr. Conway as well for his efforts. The effort of the city related to homelessness has been great, but the need has outpaced our ability to respond to serve our entire community. We appreciate you acting with the swift urgency that this requires to ensure the safety of all Sacramentoans. We know the safety of our community is a top concern for everyone in this city, and we implore the council to place this ordinance on the ballot tonight. If passed, it is our express hope that Sacramento County will also come to the table to provide necessary levels of service for those experiencing homelessness throughout their jurisdiction, including in the city of Sacramento. Again, we urge the council to approve this item for the ballot tonight. Thank you for your consideration and have a good evening.
Your comments. Next speaker is Dr. Diane Wolf. Dr. Diane Wolf, if you'll unmute.
Sorry. So I find it very concerning that the mayor and the city council are allowing Mr. Conway to bully them into a rushed decision on a flawed initiative. I think that is really bad precedent. Mr. Conway took offense to, um, the analogy to having a gun held to our heads. But you know, the analogy that comes to front for me is Mr. Putin with a nuclear option to bankrupt the city if he doesn't get what he wants. If this initiative gets on the ballot, a lot of money will be spent on both sides to support it and to fight it. More money will be sent on law, spent on lawsuits trying to defend them. All of that money could be spent on constructive solutions to homelessness if this isn't rushed forward. Nothing in this initiative focuses on building new houses. All the money is going to temporary shelters. So it's not going to solve homelessness. It's not going to move the, the solution forward. It's just going to spend money. Instead of this initiative, let's have the city council create an initiative to have the city and the county create a commission with the express assignment of within a year coming up with a plan to end homelessness in the next five years. Let's really look at this comprehensively. Let's do it in a public, transparent way to come up with a real solution to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Nikki Pachal.
Thank you. Uh, this is Nikki Pascal, a resident of Midtown. It's really frustrating for me as a voter to hear elected officials saying the city needs this initiative as a cudgel to force action on homelessness when it's your job to lead on this issue. There's no reason it had to come to this situation that the mayor referred to as being quote over barrel. And if you move this forward, you're just encouraging other special interests with horrible policies to leverage you in the way that is being done tonight. This idea that you have to have a legal mandate to address homelessness is deeply flawed. The city does all kinds of things that is not legally required to do. You weren't legally required to build Golden One, but you did it anyway. And on the substance of this initiative, if it was actually written to help create shelter and housing, then there would be funding attached. But there's nothing in this initiative that changes the fact that the city can't even fund its current shelter space and in its budget as the city manager admitted in the agenda item. It's clear to me that the real intent of this initiative is to make camping illegal, even though no credible expert believes that service resistance is the fundamental problem here. In fact, the state's foremost expert, Dr. Kuchel at UCSF, has done extensive research demonstrating that even those unsheltered folks with the highest level of impairment want housing and can be housed when the services offered match their needs. Lastly, but maybe most importantly, I want to know how many unsheltered people were consulted in the design of this proposal. You are moving forward a policy that affects at least 10,000 unsheltered people, the majority of whom are people of color. We can't just pay lip service to equity and then ignore the voices of the people this will affect. People that have been failed by structural racism and by allowing NIMBYs to block affordable housing. So instead of taking away their rights, let's hear what they actually have to say. Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker is Steve S.
This is Steve Sander with the Answer Coalition Sacramento, and I'm also a member of the city's Environmental Justice Collaborative Governance Committee. This new proposal under discussion is a complete nonstarter because it neither addresses the root causes of homelessness nor appears to be legally defensible. It seems that you have forgotten that people have a right to rest. Therefore, it should not appear on the ballot. This notion that you as a council member will support it because you think it will pass represents a failure of leadership, no backbone. You know that a majority of people surveyed recently think that we as a country lost jobs last year, even though that's factually incorrect. Doing the right thing isn't always the most popular thing, but it seems incumbent to tell the citizens the full story about the root causes of homelessness rather than buy into this effort to criminalize their existences. Not only does it represent a significant deviation from the siding plans that have been floating around for the past several months, it also appears to contravene Martin v. Boise with respect to the issue of de facto forcing people into tent cities, legalized shanty towns, really. It's my understanding that the city of Chico went forward with such a proposal and it was ruled to be not lawful. It puts the cart before the horse in terms of issuing these buffer zones with absolutely no prior understanding of whether that would even allow for the placement of even one of these tent cities. Yes, now is the time to address the issue of persons experiencing homelessness, but this heavy handed approach is not the right way to go. Instead, the city must interrogate the root causes of homelessness, such as poverty and mental illness, and should not penalize people for having gone through these tragedies. I have testified as early as the housing workshop that you called back in 2018 to address Sacramento's housing crisis that being priced out of an area is a trauma that people have to go through way too often here in the city. If you truly want to stem the tide of homelessness, then you cannot wait for additional supply to come online. As you yourself stated at the time, Mr. Mayor, please stop criminalizing their existences.
Your comments. Our next speaker is Kate Sal Corneo Molina.
Um, Kate Sal. Yeah, hi, Mayor Steinberg. Hi, Councilmember Rick Jennings. I see you. Councilmember Angela Gashby out there in the Thomas where there are no siding, no sightings. There are no tents here in pocket. They're always in district eight, district two. I want to piggyback off of what PJ said earlier about redlining. And the big, I've noticed that almost entirely the support for this bill has come from the business district. But the number of business owners in Sacramento is a fraction of the number of people that are currently experiencing low income or very low income and are currently housing insecure, especially with rising rents like last year's, which was allowed to be up to nine percent. Based on the legislation that was passed in 2018 to get a, a ballot measure off of going to the public. Um, when people are allowed to make decisions, they are going to go off of what their council members went off of and so yes, according to what the people that are in power already voted on. I don't understand, or I do understand because this just seems like another step to just pass the buck off. But Councilmember Jennings, if you'd like to take decisive action today, I would like you to take it now. You have been my council member for the last eight years now, and every time it has come to a time to, um, actually make a stand and help people, our people, Sacramentoans, they're not just homeless people. They are people that live, that live in our city that have rights. They're able to vote. They yeah, um, I mean, please just consult them and make legislation based on what their needs are.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Meg White.
Oh, my name is Meg White. Acting with community members are with some of our most vulnerable I don't know who's funding Daniel Conway or why him and his group are able to override typical due process, especially after the horrific events happened this weekend. I also feel like Mr. Conway's group is by bringing an act to the community in this highly inappropriate way. They seem to have heard from everybody, but the people who are actually living on the street. This solution is not systematic, holistic or having a percentage of beds available equal criminalization as any emergency shelter and enforcement act literally feels like right to housing act walked back in in a trench coat trying to pass as something new. This should not be called the emergency shelter. Maybe the right for the city to continue where people are, they should be safe on those grounds, housed or unhoused. The city has tried the punitive approach to homelessness. It's way past time that we start listening to the most impacted community members. But we must create affordable housing in the meantime, go to the encampments, put a dumpster with regular service, bathrooms, showers, and at the very least wraparound services there. On the streets, I repeatedly hear that the not treat people with dignity history of dishonesty, abuse and trauma caused by law enforcement and city punishing repeatedly traumatized people for the city's poor program and unfair and counterproductive. Work with the Sacramento Homeless Union, the get in touch with the community to at this act, no, just no.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Stop the sweeps, stop criminalizing homelessness. Expensive, cruel.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Joe Smith.
Evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This is Joe Smith with Loaves and Fishes. And just for a moment, take a, take a look at this from an angle that I've been, I've been looking at this and lamenting over all day. This ordinance wants to single out the group of people by virtue of the fact that they are poor and don't have a home. The ordinance wants to tell them that the way they've been surviving is no longer legal, that they have 14 days to accept a spot in a government sanctioned encampment. And all they can basically take with them is what they can carry, or they're going to be criminalized in, in 12100 dot oh four oh, they'll be charged with a misdemeanor. And this is terrifying. Think this through again. You're taking a poor person, telling them that the way they're surviving doesn't matter. They have 14 days to accept a spot in a government camp or they're going to be arrested. Absolutely terrifying. Secondly, we've all watched the back and forth with the county, and unless the county is written on this ordinance somewhere, it's my fear and many others I've talked to that this back and forth is going to continue. The folks that really need the services that the county has aren't going to get them because of this incessant back and forth between the county and the city. Lastly, and I, I've thought this through. There's, there's, one of the things you've all run into is NIMBYism, where people don't want encampments near them. I think one of the bright spots in all this is the city manager will have the authority to place a site where it's be available to be placed. Thereby taking away the businesses and the neighborhood associations, objections, and even council members from blocking it. I mean, if the city manager says it's legal and it's legit, the camp can go there. Not quite sure how the business community and the neighborhoods are going to feel about that, but I do think that's a bright spot in all this is NIMBYism kind of gets pushed to the side where it should have been all along. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Holden.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Holden, and I am a resident of D5. And if, if my comment is about whether or not there should be a vote tonight, I say no. Um, this is a special session that's been called without advanced notice to the public. Um, and we, none of us have had any time to prepare to know what we're for or what we're against or what the cost will be. The public really can't participate in this process, given how it's being conducted. And I find that everybody who's ready to vote tonight, um, it's worrisome because it sounds, it smacks of theater that you guys are all in some inside club. And the public who elected you and are supporting you aren't actually allowed to fully participate in the process. So that's my first concern, and I don't think anybody should vote tonight. I think this should go before the people for proper review. Um, the second concern is for location and, uh, every single safe site I have seen proposed tends to be right next to a large, low income development suggested in the housing element. That sounds like the city might be creating low income areas and high income areas. So I am very concerned on multiple levels and especially that site on Meadowview Road, the 100 acres. State and federal environmental justice scans say that those areas are very toxic and polluted. Every single safe ground seems to be in an unsafe place. So, um, we need to really get this right, and I have more to say on this. Two minutes isn't nearly enough. I don't like how the, the initiative Conway's been putting forward has been put before the public. I have crossed paths with people gathering those signatures, and there's been some false advertising. So
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I, I am upset about the whole thing, and that is my final comment. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Shelley Williams.
Hi, um, so yeah, first off, this meeting should not be happening. Uh, unlike the members of the business community and unelected officials who orchestrated the shady process, attending this meeting was incredibly difficult to plan on, on short notice for those of us not in the know. It's absolutely unacceptable process and speaks volumes to who holds power in the city. And yeah, this was the bait and switch that we were all waiting for. The concerns that were voiced about the original plan are realized by this so-called compromise, which clearly states that encampments are prohibited in a very explicit way. It's not an imperfection, as the mayor called it. It is a craven and appalling attempt to circumvent Martin v. Boise democratic process and basic human rights. And all of this hand wringing about the cost is embarrassing. Of course, it's expensive to continue upholding the pointless, wasteful and cruel homeless industrial complex. It costs a whole lot more than just simply providing long-term housing options and services. You're investing all of this money into so-called bridges, but what are they bridges to? They're bridges to nothing. We keep hearing about San Antonio's Haven of Hope model. Are we hearing about it from unhoused folks, advocates, service providers? No, we're hearing it from business owners and those who have historically never acted in the interest of the most marginalized Sacramentoans. It's well documented that Haven for Hope is a glorified internment camp, and anyone who's genuinely interested in the experiences of its current and former residents could easily find that info, and I strongly encourage all of you to look into that. And Sean, you're my councilperson, and you are wrong that some people need other services before they get housing. That is a dangerous lie. But back to process, these are not the behaviors of people who know they're doing the right thing. And those of you endorsing this without input from the most knowledgeable and the most impacted, even as you performatively critique the tactics, tactics used by the proponents of getting it shoved through, you are showing your allegiance and we see you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Rhonda Henderson.
Yes. Hear me?
We can.
Okay, this is Rhonda Henderson. I'm a resident in North Laguna Creek, um, area. And I feel like this is, this meeting should not have taken place without a public notice. Uh, it feels like it's being shoved out our throats to, to follow this plan. And why weren't we given a chance to know about this in advance? And then secondly, without the county's funding for the companion services, this plan will fail. We are, one of the, some of the members of the council already said, we don't have the money. So the county must be involved because it's their role to fund companion services like rehab and mental health. And lastly, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Wang that the homeless camps should be in each district, not just the districts that are most vulnerable and underserved by the city with low income areas. That's what I have to say. Thank you so much.
Your comments. Next speaker is Cory Copeland.
Hi, Cory Copeland calling in from district four. Apologies if you hear a helicopter. I think they're the official bird of our district. I think the proposal before the council has some serious policy problems and releasing this with so little public input at the last minute is really just awful from a process perspective. And I get that it's a response to like the worst policy proposal I've ever seriously seen considered in the city where we bankrupt ourselves making internment camps. Um, and to be honest, some of us, I think we're just sitting here wondering Um, and to be honest, some of us, I think we're just sitting here wondering if I want something done, should I do what Daniel did? I could just like write some god awful city killer policy and then find a few hundred friends and confuse people to sign a sheet. And then I get to what, like blackmail the city council? Um, I think we need to be honest that this is just all completely unacceptable. On that said, I will give some actual policy feedback, even though I know that's like make believe land because apparently Daniel Conway's Sacramento's worst citizen policy writer gets veto power over city policy now. Um, but here are three criticisms I had of the way that this policy is designed. First, I think it's structured in a way where a failure is success from the city's perspective. Um, the manager, based on his analysis, basically said that uh, he's deeply worried about encumbering obligations for the city. And so the best way to prevent that would be to make sure that the sites are underutilized. Um, so that would mean making them distant or poor quality. And so that, that kind of worries me. Uh, second is also, I think it features a green light for police to perform sweeps. Again, I think so, you know, like the mayor, I had no clue, uh, because of, and the city attorney didn't really clarify what does manage them mean? If not seize people's property and arrest them? Uh, and then lastly, I think a five million dollar budget is just completely inadequate. The only way I can imagine housing thousands of people on a budget like that is to do so in a completely inhumane way. So we're all kind of like characters in a Samuel Beckett novel where we're forever waiting on the county who never comes. And so without funding identified or even locations, this entire proposal seems extremely likely to fail. So, you know, I encourage everyone to take time to seriously reconsider this proposal in a sane way, uh, instead of through this weird blackmail ballot process.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Erica Hara Mello.
Hi, thank you. Um, my name's Erica Hara Mello and I am a, uh, D five resident in Oak Park and a member of the Sacramento Antis Union. Um, and I just want to echo what, um, the majority of the callers are saying. I was not prepared to. I wouldn't be prepared to vote on this. I, I didn't know anything about it until the last minute. Sounds like this whole entire thing is very undemocratic and has not actually been given meaningful time for meaningful public engagement. Um, the other thing I really wanted to point out is, you know, um, Mayor, I've, I've worked with you on stuff involving Aggie Square. And, you know, I've seen you make there's some moral and just decisions and actually, you know, when Councilmember Valenzuela was speaking about the shootings, she's deeply impacted because you can see the emotion on her face. And the fact that a lot of you don't display any emotion means you guys are so far disconnected from the issues that are happening in our neighborhoods. You need to put off the vote tonight. This is undemocratic. You guys consulted even with the police department and have done many reports that have found that the unhoused people, even people in the neighborhoods, even us, we distrust you. We distrust government. And yet you want to implement a policy that requires the trust of people who are unhoused in vulnerable situations right now. You can't do that. That's unfair. That's unjust. Please make the right decision and please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Carly Brandon. Carly Brandon, if you'll unmute.
Yeah, I think so. Hey y'all, this is actually Nikki. We're just together and I'm driving, so I'm on her phone, but Nikki Jones. And yeah, I can't believe that I'm hearing this tonight so quickly. You know, why? Why can a powerful lobbyist get an emergency meeting? But the emergency that people face night to night can't get action for years and years. Why is that? This, this process, people have already said it in so, so many more eloquent words than I can. But the process is shameful and y'all should stop, put the brakes, reconsider. Check yourselves. Check your influences. Check your motivations. This is an enforcement ordinance? Through and through, that's its purpose? How do we get to the place of enforcement? It's four-point step. It's not how do we get people to housing, it's how do we get to the place of enforcement? If we don't have actual sustainable solutions that people who live outside are engaged in the process of creating, you will not succeed. And you will only continue the status quo of criminalization, displacement, trauma, distrust. You're going to continue cycles of neglect and abandonment? And re-traumatize people who've already been through so much? So this, this, like someone said, this is a non-starter. I can't believe y'all. I have to say, I am shocked. Um, you know, which is weird because I'm like, yeah, they're all, you know, it's, it's crooked as fuck. We all know it's always been whatever the business district wants. But to hear it so blatantly, to watch you pull an emergency meeting? When it's been an emergency for so long, when people have suffered so much? And the emergency for you isn't even that people are suffering, it's that people can see it. Y'all need to check yourselves and stop.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I hope you can hear me and Rick Jennings. I appreciate, appreciate.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Samantha Corbin.
Samantha Corbin, as a downtown business owner, I'm exasperated with the regional failure to address health and safety concerns for the housed and unhoused. As an activist, I spend hours weekly with unhoused neighbors trying to connect them to services that do not exist. As a mental health advocate who coordinates services nationally for first responders, I warn you that neither plan discussed today addresses any of the fundamental components to be successful in serving traumatized communities. And as a twenty-year public policy expert, I'm concerned that the initiative is a poison pill that will do little to change status quo except for expose the city to liability to the degree of insolvency. Without the cooperation of the county or significant funding from the state to build necessary infrastructure, neither of these proposed plans will be successful and they are nothing more than lip service. But we can be successful. The state anticipates close to a seventy billion dollar surplus this year, presenting a unique opportunity for you local leaders, the business community, and advocates to work together to create necessary infrastructure and policies. This matter requires urgency and you should act urgent, urgently. But do not mistake taking an action tonight as an achievement. Neither the flawed proposed initiative or its on-the-fly response will be successful to address the issue of homelessness without other funding or coordination from the county or the state. That is a unicorn proposal. This proposal will create new lawsuits, may bankrupt the city, and will serve to further the toxic culture of concern trolling and political gamesmanship that have long been harmful to our quality of life in Sacramento. I appreciate the conversation of the mayor and the council and their statements tonight in trying to respond to what seems to be a well-intentioned but very incomplete initiative and would encourage you to take the time and consider potential other resources that are necessary to make a plan successful and then move urgently. Thank you for your time.
Your comments. Our next speaker is Barry Boyd.
Thank you, um, and good evening. I have, I am like, um, I'm sorry, I'm just frustrated because I, as several of the callers prior who are not a part of the business district or those in the affluent areas of Sacramento that are supporting this agenda item, having this meeting come without being an agendized item in a regularly scheduled city council meeting that would give everyone at least, uh, a week to ten days or two weeks to actually vet out what is being asked here is again, a, uh, I've got a bus to catch. Well, Sacramento, they're slow, so I'll use San Francisco or Los Angeles. A bus to catch that comes every five minutes. So let's rush this through for the betterment of big business. Now, obviously, big business, but the business community here in Sacramento into the detriment of communities of color and low in, uh, income communities. This agenda item should be tabled until all citizens in the city of Sacramento has, uh, the opportunity to fully vet and have questions that, uh, questions, comments, and concerns that they would have to be fully examined versus this rushed issue to make sure that, uh, it is voted on this evening. And with that, the over-concentration language needs to be put in the proposal, uh, whether it's tonight is voted on or down the road. I E. the hundred and two acres here in South Sacramento in the Meadowview community to which the city purchased, uh, just a few months ago. There is already plans for Hope for Sacramento, a nonprofit, to build a homeless, uh, facility there for wraparound services. And to have twenty acres of that hundred and two acres be specifically designed for homeless, uh, individuals. I'm not against homeless individuals, but we need equitable equality throughout the city of Sacramento in regards to this issue.
Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Certainly. I wish I had more time because I have a lot more to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Orlena Van Zant.
Yes. Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. My name is Orlena Van Zant. I'm a proud resident of Sacramento and the Vice President of the Sacramento Region Business Association. As a resident of the city of Sacramento, I personally have seen what the dramatic impact homelessness has had on our city and on our region. I'm seeing how Sacramento is truly becoming a magnet for the homeless. And unfortunately, this has hurt our businesses and our prospects for creating a thriving community that works for everyone. Sacramento is currently on track to pass San Francisco in their number of homeless, which at last PIT count was over eight thousand. And that is completely unacceptable to the business community. That is why Region Business partnered with Daniel Conway to bring forward a ballot measure that would solve this issue. We acted because the situation is a crisis that required strong action. Region Business is one of the three officers of this campaign and strongly feel that the existing ballot measure, which is amazing, actually voters feel this way as well, as it polls at seventy-one percent. Seventy-one percent. We have half the signatures we need thus far to qualify our measure. And Region Business is one hundred percent committed to move forward with our ballot measure. That's only if you choose to not accept this proposal presented before you today. However, we believe it is in the best interest of the community for us to endorse this compromise and work together to pass Mr. Chan's proposal, which is very similar to the Daniel Conway version, but as we understand, is more palatable to the city. Region Business urges you strongly to vote today and approve the compromise proposal without changes or delay. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Your comments. Our next speaker is Matt Gallagher.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. My name is Matt Gallagher. I'm an attorney, homeless advocate, and a resident of Vice Mayor Ashby's district. I respectfully ask that the vote not occur tonight on this proposal, and I do so for two primary reasons. First, the ballot initiative and the alternate ordinance are set up to fail. Whether it be the, the ability to actually create enough homeless shelters or the actual enforcement mechanisms. When we look at the ordinance language and we compare that with the Boise decision, you'll see striking similarities. And I worry that this will not survive judicial review and it will be challenged. No doubt about that. Also, when I look at Judge England's decision in Chico, where he granted the T R O, the Temporary Restraining Order, the, the language in that statute, that ordinance, is nearly identical to what is present here. Therefore, I ask you not to go forward with the vote. Second, this will not solve the homelessness crisis in Sacramento. We all want to see solutions and answers, but criminalizing homelessness in the 21st century is not the proper solution. Moreover, given that this was rushed and that a lot of people who would like to express their opinions on this are not here tonight, I urge you to not vote. I urge you to hold the town hall on this matter. Allow that these proposals be subject to public comment and allow individuals from our Sacramento community to provide their input. It cannot be lost on this council that Sacramento is still mourning. We are in mourning of the greatest tragedy that has happened in Sacramento for as long as I can remember. And it is a shame that Sacramento is rushing this proposal without listening to all of its stakeholders, especially during this time of mourning. I urge you to reconsider your position about yes on either of these proposals tonight. Thank you for your time.
Your comments. Our next speaker is Gordon Liu.
Hi, um, my name's Gordon Liu. Um, I'm a resident of District Two. Um, I agree with some of the comments that Sean LaLoley made. We have some problems with the county. Um, our, um, over-concentration here in this area is really bad. We all, we have over-concentration of all kinds of things here. We have three camps. We have three sitting sites here that are within a, about a mile and a half, about a mile from each other. And I'm, I'm afraid this is just going to make the area even worse. Um, we need county support. We need sustainable solutions. I urge a no vote. We need public participation too. This was like the last minute and I had, um, some other people get ahold of me and I called at the last minute. And this is really without the, uh, public, this feels like it's some kind of like underhanded sneaky thing, just pushing some person's agenda that has more money than we do down here. We're fighting just to survive. Uh, people have problems in the neighborhood already. We don't even have shelter, sitting, sitting site shelters open. Neighbors have problems with all kinds of homeless things and we do need to have something going on, but it's just going to bring more here. And then what do we do? We just keep building and building and building. We need a sustainable solution. And it needs to work for everybody, the homeless and the residents of, of our district and our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Philip Kim.
Hi, uh, Philip Kim here. Um, I'm in Southland Park, uh, and I think I'm back in District Four as of last night. And I am very concerned that the offer of emergency shelter space, which is one of the conditions for enforcement action on unlawful camping in the ordinance, I'm concerned, concerned that it doesn't specify and offer different types of housing for people who are not able to accept some type of, um, group housing for a variety of legitimate reasons, uh, by different people. Some of, some of these reasons were mentioned by Councilmember Valenzuela. For example, survivors of sexual assault. I think it's perfectly reasonable and expected for them to turn down a living situation with multiple roommates. Uh, people who experience post-traumatic stress disorder. Uh, and then another reason that's, uh, really important right now, right now, and I don't think it's been mentioned is we're still in the middle of a deadly pandemic, COVID-19. And, you know, COVID infection, even if it doesn't lead to hospitalization and death, has been shown to cause damage to the brain, blood vessels, kidneys, and other organs. And so, you know, by having people subject, subject themselves to living in a multiple roommate situation, you're increasing their risk of contracting COVID and increasing their, their risk of, um, of hospitalization and organ damage. Um, so I think the amendment put forward by councilmembers Valenzuela and Vang is, uh, a perfectly reasonable and should be adopted. I believe it specified at least three varieties of housing, group housing, a single-room housing, acceptable camping setups. I'm going by memory here. I think there might have been some other types. But I urge you to a, adopt this amendment. And I'm concerned that if, if you don't specify this, this, this city manager will enforce the unlawful camping with cruelty, as, as we saw recently with the car towings and the, and the heartbreaking coverage by the Sacramento Bee reporters and videographers. So I urge you to adopt this amendment put forward by councilmembers Valenzuela and Vang, as well as the two others that they put forward. And however you go forward, I urge you to use this opportunity.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. To please support social housing, affordable social housing in the legislature.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kim Sau. Your comments. And our final speaker is Josh Wood. Josh Wood, if y'all are mute.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. This is Josh Wood with Region Business. I just wanted to respond to a question that I, we'd received during the comments from Councilmember Schneer. And just to be clear, we know our organization is one of the main funders of this measure and we absolutely are committed to putting pressure on the county to move forward. And if they don't move forward, we are one hundred percent committed to qualifying a ballot measure via signatures, if that's what is necessary to ensure that a solution is done countywide as well. So that's the only thing I wanted to say on the record. Thank you so much for making the time for all of us today and we just urge that you would move the item.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you very much, members of the public. I know comes from Valenzuela's up, but I'm gonna take the prerogative to speak first. And I know that there may be motion and different ways to approach this. I want to stipulate here that the process and in some ways the politics here are ugly. And as I said at the very beginning of the evening, I would prefer, strongly prefer that give this a week and have the chance to review this, consider some of the suggestions that were made by colleagues. But I also hear, and I've heard all of our colleagues in the first round that want to vote tonight. And I want to tell you where I stand and maybe under the category that there are no easy choices in life and in politics. But in the end, one has to judge whether or not a measure of this import will actually improve the quality of life in our city and improve possibilities that more people who are unsheltered and homeless and forgotten will get the help they need that they currently are not getting. And my conclusion is that on balance, the answer is yes. And I want to explain to you why. You know, as mayor, it's a different role than state legislator. I have to be concerned about the cleanliness and the safety of our city. And that's at real issue here. That is at real issue here. Those of you who know me, and if you know my public record, and most people do, and I'm thinking about what Carly said in her public testimony. For me, whether it's been my work authoring the Mental Health Services Act Prop 63, whether it's the No Place Like Home Initiative that's provided $2 billion worth of housing that we're using here in the city and county to house people with serious mental illnesses, everything I've done in this area over twenty-five years has always been about the people who are always, because that's our moral obligation. And I understand the, many of the callers and many of the people who believe that we have forgotten, we have forsaken, and frankly, we have discriminated against a class of people who, but for the grace of God, there go I, who are human beings. We lost a homeless woman on the streets this week by gunfire, an innocent victim. A woman who was waiting for the crowd to go away before she went to sleep and she got shot to death. These are human beings. And all the so-called experts and the stakeholders who think they know everything about this must remember that we're dealing with real people here at a terrible social condition. That at its root, at its root is poverty, as it root, at its root is the lack of affordability. At its root is, is that some people don't get the same breaks in life as others. So that's always my motivation. And at the same time, I have come to the personal conclusion over many years of advocacy on behalf of people, especially homeless people and mentally ill people, that it is not right, it's not safe and it is not healthy for people to live outside. And if you start from that perspective, you start from where the public policy of any city or any society should be, people should not live outdoors. That means that we both have to, have to make the government, those in charge, provide shelter and yes, ultimately, and that also means that when people are offered that housing or that shelter, that they have to accept it. And I agree, multiple options should be provided to people. And in reality, when we build up our Department of Community Response and when we have the partnership with the county that we are all endeavoring to have, I hope there will be enough outreach that we'll be able to actually help find people exactly what they need. But in the meantime, morally wrong, it's unsafe, it's unhealthy for people living out on the streets. I got asked today by someone whether or not the comprehensive siting plan is still alive. And after all, to my great frustration, it has been eight months since its August passage and despite our shelters and a lot of effort to try to plan for the hundred and two acres and the downtown side, we don't yet have anything to go for it. And this is my opinion, that tonight's action, as imperfect as it is, helps bring that siting plan back to life. I know I am the focal point of so much anger from all sides and especially the business community. I would like to remind all of my critics here that I have brought over $200 million to this city to help get those fourteen thousand people off the street. I pioneered with my colleagues here the comprehensive siting plan. I got us to be the only city in the state to take on whole person care. I've generated $3.8 billion statewide for, for mental health. And I initiated the Department of Community Response, all with the support of my colleagues. My public advocacy for this legal requirement, truth be told, inspired Daniel Conway to sue Los Angeles and draft his very initiative. I appreciate Jeff Harris being one member who at least acknowledged and recognized that night. You know what the real problem here is, members, and why this is so important to pass tonight? And it's not the fault of any individual, although I, I could critique everyone, including myself. The reason why we haven't made greater progress is the law does not require us to. We work within systems. We work within a city system. Some call it a bureaucracy. Talked a lot tonight about the county bureaucracy. And you know why there aren't more outreach workers out on the street and why we haven't built shelter faster? Because we're not legally required to. That is a fact and I'll argue that with anybody. So the insight that I came up with three years ago and that Daniel Conway has replicated, and again, I don't begrudge that because I think you put out ideas so that other people will actually pick them up and, and, and go run with them and evolve them in their own way. But the crucial insight here is that unless and until we hold ourselves and our systems accountable, legally accountable for greater results, nothing is gonna change. And so this is a, a crack of a door. We've cracked open a door that says government must be accountable. And the mirror image of government being accountable is that people will then have some form of a right to have shelter or to ultimately have housing. And when the county comes on board, people will have the right or the entitlement to some form of mental health or substance abuse services when they need them. Remember, the core of this initiative requires the city to produce sixty percent of the point in time count. That's a heck of a lot better than we're doing now. For now, there are no timelines. There are no production standards. There is no recourse for either an advocate, homeless advocate, or a business leader or a citizen to say to the city, move faster, or to say to the county ultimately, move faster and do your job. That's why this is powerful. And that's why despite the fact that I would love to see it a little bit differently, maybe a lot differently, I would start with the right and then the obligation. Conway reversed them. This is good and it will help get more people off of our streets. And so i-if Mr. Conway is willing to accept the one amendment that Vice Mayor Ashby put forward, which is to ensure that the word districts is written in instead of citywide, I'm, I'm ready to leave it at that and to vote for Councilmember Harris's motion and, and to move this forward tonight. I'd like to hear from my colleagues. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Mayor, that unhoused woman who was killed on Sunday mornings had a name. And she deserved a real solution, as do the thousands of people who are on our streets tonight, who are waiting on that solution to come. We cannot change the language on this measure after we vote on it tonight. I need to say that because I know you all know that, but I need us to say we can't make any more changes after tonight. We can have as many debates as we want to over the summer and in the fall as people are considering this measure, but we will not be able to make any changes. And there have been real solutions, real ideas put on the table tonight that we are not being given the opportunity to even think about or talk about. And given that the city of L.A. and the county of L.A. are no better based on what Daniel Conway has been doing, and we are hearing people telling us they're pointing to Chico and saying, watch out, that's a mess. You don't want to do that. They deserve time to just think for a minute. Further, I just need to say that I resent the implication from proponents that I could have somehow engaged them when they started calling me this week about this language, mostly yesterday, when I've been spending almost every waking moment for the last three days, focused on how I can help my community heal and find a path forward after the horrific incident on Sunday. So you're right, Daniel. I did not call you when you texted me at 3:16 PM today. I had more important things I was doing and it wasn't enough time. It was already too late. The meeting was gonna start in an hour and a half. And to hear proponents on this call say that they are one hundred percent committed to continuing to circulate signatures on a measure that will devastate our city, I don't have words for that. I don't know how to describe that. That's not anyone who has our city's best intentions at heart. That's not anybody who wants real solutions. We've told them that that won't work. We've told them that what that will do to our city and they're still going ahead. So what are we even doing here right now? We are letting a small few with resources dictate how we make policy as a city. We are letting them make us ignore good suggestions. Because I agree, Mayor, I think it's a great thing that we put it to the voters. I think it's great that we would have a law. I think it's great that we can't back out of it. I think it's great that we're setting standards and metrics and processes that we will work on this. That's all great. But the devil is in the details and there are too many details here that have not been worked out. So Mayor, I'm moving right now a substitute motion to delay this item at least until next Tuesday, to give the proponents of this harmful and ill-conceived measure the opportunity to thoughtfully consider the points that have been raised here tonight and to provide a thoughtful reply. Not a political reply, not a process reply, but a thoughtful reply to the point-by-point recommendations and ideas and solutions that have been proposed tonight so that we can have a thoughtful discussion on Tuesday and put something forward that is in the best interest of our city. That is what I'm asking. So my substitute motion is to delay this until Tuesday. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes, I am Vice Mayor. Sorry. Go ahead. Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So my biggest concern here, I appreciate the every district and statewide. I don't think that affects anybody except for us. I also appreciate that the concern that not empower the county to be able to end the entire effort. I understand and appreciate that. But would still like to find some level of assurance for this body that the intent of the city council is for the county to act. And so this is what I'm hoping we can add, Mr. Conway. This act is not intended to relieve the state and county of their obligation to provide services to those who need assistance. It is intended to prompt the county to adopt a comparable county measure. This should be a unified regional approach to successfully address this crisis. If we could add that, and I think our legal counsel suggested that potentially it would be on page sixteen and in sub-three, which I think works. If you could accept that, then I will make a substitute motion for that to be included along with the citywide language, unless of course, my colleague, Mr. Harris, if you're willing to accept those two, wants to adopt them into his motion.
Let's hear from Mr. Conway.
Vice Mayor, yeah, no, Vice Mayor Ashby, I thank you so much for doing what you often do on Tuesday nights in terms of trying to thread all these needles. I think the language that you just read seems very sensible. And so I guess my only hesitation before I give you a, a clear yes is I just want to give your other colleagues a chance to weigh in.
Now, Daniel, Daniel, Mr. Conway, you, you're not running the meeting. I want you to say whether or not you accept it and then we'll make the motion. Here from everybody. Do you accept what Ms. Ashby said? You're the proponent.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I was not trying to take over your meeting. I just noticed that Councilmember Vang had her hand up, so I was just trying to be respectful of that. But as I, as I stated, sir, I thought that the language that Vice Mayor Ashby just read was on point and is certainly something that I would be willing to adopt as part of this final, or I would be willing to accept as part of a final motion. So thank you so much, Vice Mayor Ashby, for your work.
That's helpful. Okay, good. So now we know that that would be okay. So Councilmember Harris, would you be willing to accept those two changes as part of your main motion?
Assuming that Daniel Conway and his colleagues are still committed to taking their ballot initiative out of play with this language involved and thus in, in the, the city-proposed ordinance, yes, I would accept those amendments.
Okay, and that's Mr. Conway, just to confirm.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris.
Mr. Conway, just to confirm, you'll, you'll still withdraw your measure with those two?
Given we get action from the council tonight, we are prepared to withdraw our measure. Correct?
Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay.
Daryl, I was, I was the second on it. I'll accept those changes as well.
Okay, so now we have a main motion. We still have Councilmember Valenzuela's substitute. Member Vang?
To drastically change how we address homelessness, I am still incredibly concerned about the many unintended consequences that is going to occur if this, if this, if this pass. I would like to, to make a substitute motion to move forward with this, to approve this initiative with the three amendments that Councilmember Valenzuela and I suggested. And I would like to, yeah, put that motion on the table. And I would like to, yeah, put that motion on the table.
Is there a second on that motion?
Given that I don't have a second for my motion.
Okay, there's then a substitute motion. Let us call the roll on the substitute motion.
The substitute motion by Vang and second by Valenzuela, Vice Mayor Ashby. Councilmember LaLowe?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneer?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Geta?
No.
Councilmember Jennings?
No.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
No. Let's call the main motion, please.
The main motion was by Councilmember Harris and a second by Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes, wait, Mr. Geta, did you have a quick question?
Yeah, no, I did. I didn't. I, I wanted to go back to my point about, that I mentioned earlier on the over-concentration at a later time. I do want to work, I would like the city manager to come back and also respond to previous policy we had on over-concentration, standing policy that we have. I do believe that Councilmember Vang point. So I want to make sure that we have that, that, that response back to the council.
And Mr. Mayor, may I speak to this issue? You know, I just wanted to say that the issue that Councilmember Vang and Councilmember Valenzuela have raised about over-concentration is certainly something that our coalition is sensitive to. And, and we want to see this done in an equitable manner. So to the extent that you and your colleagues would prefer to have language in there that says district by district versus the citywide language that's there, our coalition's willing to accept that tonight.
And that, that was part of, that was part of the Vice Mayor's amendment that you accepted a couple minutes ago. So we're but, but, yes, okay. Good. Councilmember Geta, anything else?
No, that's good. I heard, I saw the city manager nodding his head. I'm assuming that's a yes.
That is a yes. That's a yes. Okay. Let us call the motion, let us call the roll on the main motion. Your Councilmember Harris's as amended, friendly amendment, second by Councilmember Schneer. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember LaLowe?
I just want to make sure, Mr. Mayor, that those two languages will have, have been accepted then, and they will be
Yes.
One, the district, and the other one, the language that Vice Mayor
Yes.
Then I.
That was a yes, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Councilmember Schneer?
Aye.
Council, Mayor Pro Tem Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
No.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. That passes seven to two. That will, I guess we have to come back in a week or two. Creative issue by the clerk, but that is the decision of council. Thank you all very, very much. Very difficult. Difficult set of issues, but I think we worked through it together. Thank you, Conway. Thank you, Mr. Manager. If there's nothing else to come before the city council tonight in this special meeting, I don't think there is, Madam Clerk, we are adjourned.